Good afternoon. Welcome to the Moore County Board of Education Work Session and Special Called Meeting for Monday, August 5, 2019. Is there a motion to approve? Okay, there was a motion by Mr. Dennison and the second was by, who went first?
Ms. Brown.
Dr. Brown. Dr. Brown. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, six zero.
Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's take a moment of silence. All right, thank you. We have a full agenda for today. Dr. Grimacy.
Yeah ma'am chair, at this time I'll invite Dr. Metcalf and Friends forward.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. We are here to provide an update on the ACT situation at Pinecrest High School. Principal Phillips is going to provide an update on the supports that are being provided to the students. And then Ms. Fall will provide an update on the accountability measures, that piece of it. And then I'll provide a quick report on the work of the ACT District Fire Team that's looking at the testing. And we'll start with Ms. Phillips.
Thank you. Good afternoon, members of the board, Superintendent Grimacy, guests and community members watching at home. Thank you for your time today. I want to start out by apologizing to the entire class of 2020, their parents and our school family, the district and the Board of Education. The mishandling of the ACT answer sheets was a significant error. And I feel personally responsible for the stress and the anxiety that those students who are impacted have gone through as a result of this error. It did happen on my watch and I am ultimately accountable for the successful administration of the ACT at Pinecrest High School. I am also extremely sorry for the amount of work this has caused everyone impacted by the mishandling of the ACT answer sheets. It has taken countless staff hours away from very important other needs at the school and at the district. Again, I want to apologize to the senior class for the inconvenience and stress this has caused. I will be meeting with the entire senior class on August 21st and again on the first day of school to apologize to them in person and begin the journey of rebuilding their trust and confidence in our school administration. Once again, members of the board and Superintendent Grimacy, I am sorry. The first thing I want to review with you specifically is the Immediate Test Administration Action Plan. When Ms. Fall and I began the first days of the investigation, we had this action plan in place before she ever left Pinecrest. Some highlights of that plan are the testing coordinator will become a certified position. It was a classified position. There will be an assistant principal who will provide direct oversight for the entire testing process with verbal and written communication as to what that process should look like. There will be two testing teams, a team for logistics and a team for testing processes. I'm sure the Board of Education has learned more about ACT than they ever knew before. And logistics is a huge part of that administration at Pinecrest High School because we use arena testing and you're putting desk in a gym with specific guidelines that state head to heads, three feet, both side to side and front to back. So that's the importance of having a logistics team added to the action plan. The testing coordinator and assistant will be with all test materials at all times until pickup. Additional highlights, the process to submit pitch, there will be a process developed to submit pictures of FedEx shipping labels at pickup. There will be regularly scheduled meetings to review status updates both before and after testing, including both teams and myself. After the administration, there will be a survey administered to the staff for feedback on test administration so we can continuously improve. And this will be the basis of the fire teamwork for the district. Now for supports, we've offered an ACT preparation class, the Grab Point. That course highlights English, math and science. Has three different sections in that course. Registration assistance for the July and September test dates. In June, our counselors were there and they assisted with the registration process. For the month of July, my office has been command central and I have personally registered students along with Ms. Trogdon and then a lead teacher has been in to help as well. Application for accommodation request. Why is this support important? Because our 504 students and our IP students have a special process to apply for accommodations. And when we're testing outside of a school-based test, it's a different process. And I'll speak to that again in a moment. And when the students return, we're going to have counselor meetings with students concerned about early admissions. The guidance team met on their first day back and they divided up colleges that have an early admission process. And they are personally calling colleges to get information directly from them so we can properly advise students to the college of their choice. College-specific information will be provided to all those students. We also pulled all the SAT scores for our students and we have those in a spreadsheet so we can also properly advise students, advise students based upon their SAT score for early admission as well. Now the numbers. In July, we had 10 students test, five registered at Pinecrest and then five requested reimbursement. For the upcoming September test, as of today, updated from your presentation, as of today, we have 92 students registered. Eighty-three registered at Pinecrest High School and then nine have requested reimbursement. These numbers may not be an accurate count of all the students who are going to take the ACT administration because not everybody's asking for reimbursement. So after the September test date, we'll get a report from ACT which will allow us to know exactly how many students tested in September. Three students have been approved for special testing. Why is this important for you to know? Because those students will test at Pinecrest High School. When you get approved for special testing, I have to submit paperwork to ACT that states these students can test at our school. So they give us a testing window and those students will be testing on Saturdays at Pinecrest High School with trained people on staff, primarily the guidance department and then our 504 coordinator. We have 34 students as of today enrolled in the ACT prep class. During the month of June, we spoke to 54 parents and students regarding the ACT. Twenty of those students were personal calls. And once again, please keep in mind that we are not sure of the official number of students who are going to test in September until we get that report from ACT.
So in terms of the impact of the missing ACT scores on the 18-19 data reports, the ACT's participation at Pinecrest will be reported as less than 5% for all 2018-19 reports. Additionally, any reporting of ACT results, for example, the composite score as reported out for the district, will not include Pinecrest High School. Therefore, it's going to be nearly impossible to accurately compare the Moore County Schools ACT data points over the years since a large portion of the data is missing for the 18-19 year. However, in terms of the school report card grade, that letter grade that's assigned to each school, the ACT data, sorry, the ACT data that is included is based on the senior class. And so that means that the 11th grade ACT scores are banked until the following year, when the students are seniors. So our junior class, those scores are banked until their senior year. So what's going to happen is that we will have those scores in time to be used for the school report card. So therefore, there is not a negative impact on the calculation for school performance grade for the 1920 school year. 18-19 or 1920, let me be clear, this school year, the previous school year or the one we're going into. We have worked closely with the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction to ensure that every student impacted has the opportunity to retest and that their scores will count for all possible accountability measures at Pinecrest High School and Moore County Schools. Any student who takes the test either during the Saturday administration for the school or at the school administration on October 1st or 15th will be included in accountability measures. This will ensure that students who took the assessment in June, July or September during the off-site Saturday administration will not need to test again on October 1st and 15th to be counted for accountability. However, their scores will be included in the composite score reports, participation measure and school performance grading. While Moore County Schools has opted to afford any Pinecrest student senior the ability to take the ACT, the only students who will be included for our accountability measures will be students who were eligible for the ACT testing during the March 2019 administration. So the late test date, the makeup test date for ACT administration. That is any student who was enrolled in 11th grade at Pinecrest High School on the March data collection date. NCDPI is going to be providing us a list of that, of those eligible students. All eligible students will be required to test. However, we have several opportunities for them to be assessed to be included in the accountability measures. Those opportunities were previously outlined by Principal Phillips. Any student who is on the NCDPI list will take the ACT and their participation scores will count towards accountability measures. Any student who tests, who is not on the NCDPI eligibility list will receive scores, but they will not count towards participation in score reports for Pinecrest High Schools. So if you have a student who enrolled after that March date at Pinecrest, they will still receive their scores. They'll be allowed to retest. They'll receive their scores, but it will not necessarily count in our accountability measures. Impacted students who were at Pinecrest High School in March of 2019 and have since transferred to another Moore County School will be included in the retesting opportunity and will be included in accountability measures. So if a student had transferred to Union Pines or Northmore, they will be included in this process. We are currently working to identify who those students are that meet that criteria. And if there are any, we will work with them and their families individually to make sure that the students have equal access. Impacted students who were at Pinecrest High School, impacted students who were at Pinecrest High School and have since transferred outside of Moore County Schools will not be included for accountability measures. So if you had a student who transferred out at the, let's say, April and they've transferred out, they will not be included in our accountability measures. However, Moore County Schools will make sure that these students are given the opportunity to retest at no expense to the student. And we have already worked with at least one family to ensure that that happens. Students who have taken the ACT or SAT prior to the September Saturday admin, sorry, sorry. Prior to the September Saturday administration, who does not wish to participate in the fall 2019 ACT testing on October 1st, must have met certain score requirements which will be posted on the Pinecrest website. These students must provide a copy of their scores to Pinecrest High School and complete a waiver form. The waiver form will be submitted to NCDPI for processing. All eligible students still enrolled in Moore County Schools who do not test either during the June, July or September Saturday administration or the October 1st and 15th onsite administration and who do not meet the waiver requirements will count against the accountability measures for Pinecrest High School and ultimately Moore County Schools.
Thank you. Shortly after the incident at Pinecrest High School, Dr. Grimacy directed us to put together an Assessment Process Review Fire Team. We've already had our first meeting and as you can see, there's representatives on that fire team from across both the central office as well as across all of the high schools. That includes Kate, of course, Tanya Del Conte, our manager for testing and accountability, our CTE people, Tracy McNeil, Ms. Phillips will represent the high school principals on their team, as well as AP Coordinator Jennifer Kearney from Pinecrest High School, Josh Newton, who works with us at Pinecrest, is also the coordinator for Sand Hills Community College, Joseph Patterson, the test coordinator at Northmore High School, Chris Monroe, a counselor and AP coordinator at Northmore High School, Nick Capps, who handles testing at Union Pines High School, Renee Portfilio, the counselor for UP, and Melanie Lee, a career development coordinator for Union Pines High School. In addition, Kent Eklund will provide an advisory role for us as director of technology if we would like to do some online testing. We're going to be looking at more than just the ACT assessment that we give. We're also going to be looking at the pre-ACT, the work keys, the advanced placement, the WEDA, the read to achieve, the end of grade, the end of course, our North Carolina final exams, our CTE post-assessments, all of the state and independent assessments that we are required to give. We're going to look at our processes and procedures around them. This team will do work in this area. Some of the procedures we'll be reviewing, the training procedures and our requirements for that, our timeline, security measures, accountability procedures, accommodations, logistics, and whether we want to go online or paper and pencil administration. These will be the topics of our conversations and the word will guide our, our work. We want to make sure that we have appropriate procedures in place and that they are consistent from school to school and are applied with that level of consistency. We've already met once. We met on July 22nd, not from 2:00 to 3:30 a.m. We are committed, but not that committed, I might say. We actually were from 2:00 to 3:30 p.m. We had each of our high school principals there and, and set the ground rules for the work that was going to become and where we wanted to have our starting point. Our next meeting will be August 7th from 8:00 to 11:30. We'll really dig in into this work. Then again, August 29th. September 9th, Kate will be leading this. She will be at an LEA Director's Meeting and will be meeting with representatives from other schools in our region to get a feel for what their procedures and processes are at their district level and at their school levels in their school districts. And she will bring that information back to us. We want to make sure we're being consistent and we're not missing something that other schools and other systems have in place that we might not have in place. So we're going to be comparing notes with other districts. And then September 25th is our final meeting. Of course, we will continue those meetings if need be, but hopefully we'll have processes and procedures in place for all of these assessments. And of course, we'll report back to you as we move through this process. We're also, as Principal Phillips noted, providing specific support to the administration on October 1st and October 15th for the ACT. So as this work continues, we're going to give special detail, a special look at the work there to make sure that's done appropriately. And we are certainly here to answer any questions that you may have.
What impact will this have by not having the 95% participation?
Because we've been working with DPI so diligently, they just want us to be aware of that 95%. Usually when you do not meet 95%, you have to come up with an action plan of how you will avoid that in the future. You have to provide documentation about why you didn't meet it. All of that has already been handled as a part of this process. So they are aware of that 95%. They do expect us to meet 95%.
The following year.
So as a part of this retest, now they've opened it up, so it's not just the testing on October 1st and 15th. It also includes those Saturday administrations prior to September. So when we add all of those together, they are anticipating that we meet 95%. And if we don't, then we will have to provide the action statement.
Okay. Thank you.
Stephanie, first I want to just acknowledge your initial comments of taking responsibility and accountability going forward. We certainly recognize that this incident was human error and putting a plan in place going forward, we just appreciate you and the things that you've already done to move forward with this process. One of the questions I have is with the turnaround time following the testing of getting the material together and FedEx, and is there a designated timeframe from following when the students take the test and getting the answer sheets and getting those picked up by FedEx?
Yes ma'am, ACT schedules FedEx to pick up the next day at the school. They have put a little caveat in there that if they're not ready at that time, then you can take them to ship on site or whatever your local FedEx provider is. But the expectation is that they're sent out the next day. And it's such a regular FedEx pickup time that every school has.
Okay. And the students, the 10 students that did the retake in July, were all of those students part of the initial February, March testing that, that their information was lost? So we didn't have any, anybody new to pop up, basically? Okay.
When do we expect the results to come back from the administrations in September and October?
It's a three to eight week window.
And can ACT speed that up at all for us or is that, that is set, that's their process?
Yes ma'am, it's their process.
And I will add that it's a little, oftentimes it's a little bit longer than the three to eight weeks for the schools to receive the score reports.
They go directly to the student, correct?
The scores go directly to the students initially and then we also, as a school system, get the reports which can sometimes be after that three to eight week window.
And of, an additional point with that is that's one of the things the guidance counselors are calling those early admission colleges for. Because, just because the student gets their ACT score, let's, let's go with the low end in three weeks, it doesn't mean that that college pulls at three weeks. The colleges have certain dates that they pull scores. So you might receive your score in three weeks, but the college might not pull it to week four. So that's why the guidance team has divided that up to get those dates specifically, the pull dates specifically from those early admission colleges.
Thank you for clarifying that. I didn't understand that they were calling the colleges themselves and not the students. So thank you for clarifying that.
Has a decision been made whether the October 1st administration will be an online administration or pencil and paper?
It will be paper pencil because that's the only option available to us through ACT. They require that those, that that district administration be done on paper pencil.
For this administration, it is possible we go online for future administrations of the ACT.
So we anticipate trying to have as many students as possible taking this test again on October 1st. And where is the September administration?
It's a variety of locations. O'Neill School has the majority of our students testing there. We also have students testing at Scotland High School and Richmond High School.
Whatever's convenient, yeah. And one other question, were we noting that the testing coordinator position becomes a certified position? That's at all three of the high schools, not just at Pinecrest?
The other two high schools, only Pinecrest because of their size has a coordinator. The other two schools use an assistant principal for that particular role.
So just so I'm clear too, because I have not gone through this, the ACT for the October administration, those registrations have not happened yet because that'll happen at school or when do those registrations start happening?
So it's a little bit different. The tests that the students took in July and September are called national test dates and those are individual registrations. The October test dates called a state test date. And for those administrations, we provide a database to ACT and that's how the registration happens. It's not individually student by student.
We just completed the online registration for Pinecrest to be able to administer in October.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Dr. Metcalf, when would the school board expect to hear back from the, from you and the fire team?
We will report back in September and definitely October as well as we provide information surrounding where we're at and any additional information we might have.
Will there be enough substance in September or would you prefer to wait till October?
We put it on the agenda at this point, Dr. Grimacy, but as, depending on the progress of the fire team, we'll make a determination whether to pull that out, wait till October or whether to keep, provide a report to you in September as well.
One, one other question. Do we know if ACT is looking at their procedures for the receiving of tests? Because I still do wonder why they didn't make note that having shipped supplies to Pinecrest, they never received score sheets. And, and that didn't sound a bell of alarm for them as well. So are they, they looking into their procedures?
What we were told from our DPI contact who's communicating with ACT is that ACT has launched an internal investigation as well, but odds are we will not ever know the results of that investigation. It is something that they did realize was a, was an issue and a concern and they did address that with our DPI.
Yeah, even a simple postcard or an email that says, "All materials received"
Yeah.
would, would be a reassurance.
We thank you for your work this summer. We know that this is something that we hope will never happen again. With all the procedures that are going into place, it sounds like looking at all of our testing is, is the right thing to be doing at this point to ensure that this won't happen again. And my expectation is that I think those LEAs that you're going to be talking to in September might actually be looking at us, at what we're doing.
I've already received at least one.
I'm, I'm sure. So I'm sure there'll be a lot of reciprocity to ensure that this type of thing doesn't happen in the state again. So thank you.
With your permission, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'll invite Mr. Barath to come forward.
For item 2B, Budget and Schedule Report for New Construction Projects, this is a new feature to the work session agenda, one that we think that we'll begin to include in future work sessions. This is our first go at it. We see refinements in the future. I will turn it over to Mr. Barath who will lead with the significant, most significant news that being the opening of bids for construction of the new Pinehurst Elementary School. Mr. Barath.
Thank you, Dr. Grimacy. Good afternoon, Board of Members.
Good afternoon, Board members. In the long narrative there, apologize for that, we will be brief in the next ones moving forward with a lot more imagery, pictures and schedules and such to talk about. This one's more narrative to bring the board with the information on the Pinehurst opening as well the progress on the other schools that are in construction, especially those that are getting ready to open. So to start off here with Pinehurst Elementary School, the good news is we had four bidders submit bids for the new school last week on August 1st. That was good news. The apparent low response of bidders, Thomas Construction Group based out of Wilmington, North Carolina. Now their base bid amount was $31,750,000. The bid range from the low to the apparent high bid submitted is just about 5.3%. The bid difference from the lowest bid and the second lowest bid was six tenths of a percent. So this signifies to us that we had a good bid process, a good tight bid opening. So following the bid opening, the architect began working with Thomas Construction and looking for verification of their bid and preparing the certification of the bids that were submitted. The identified budget, that's the blue sheets that everyone's been looking at all these years for each project broken out. In that sheet, we had identified $28.87 million for the construction of the school. That was the combination of the construction items listed in the top portion of that budget sheet and the applicable prorated amount of the inflation applied to that to get to the $28.87 million. That means the difference between the apparent low bid and the budget for the project as identified is $2.88 million. Now staff and the design team consisting of ratio architects, LKC engineers, Dewberry Engineering, and Thomas Construction Group had a conference call Friday to discuss other opportunities in the project that we want to take a look at to consider opportunities to save. I want to remind the board that we went through this process on the previous projects. Everything that came out of the process on those projects for opportunities to save without sacrificing operation or sustainability of the school has been incorporated into this project. However, this is a different design team, this is a different contractor, it's different subs, so we're hoping that with another whole set of eyes, there might be some items that we can identify in here that could bring potential savings to the project. The group will meet on August 16th to review the entire list of proposed items and then immediately follow up the following week to develop a final recommendation to the school board for presentation on September 3rd. There are funding opportunities within the total project, again, keeping in mind that if we look specifically at the Pinehurst Elementary budget sheet, there is identified $945,000 of contingency. There is a remaining prorated amount of the escalation inflation cost of about $195,000. Combined, that's just over $1.1 million of available funding there. If you apply that to the $2.88 million, you end up with just over $1.7 million of needed funds. Now, if we were to drain all of the contingency money to put it into the award, we must exercise caution because the site is not an undeveloped site. This site had previous structures on it at some time. We do not know what might be encountered as we begin putting in utilities and foundations for the new building as well as the demolition of the existing structures. So the design team's going to evaluate the potential risks for all that in our assessment that we bring to the board on the 3rd. The current status, because again, we're working on a $103 million budget that we divided up amongst the three schools, but for the overall project of the three elementary schools, which means you would include the deficit on Southern Pines Elementary of the $2.68 million, creates a cumulative deficit of $4.4 million. We still have unused funds in the Aberdeen and the Southern Pines projects. There is contingency for those projects. We had to take some of it to apply towards the award, but we still have remaining contingencies there. We also have the remaining proration of escalation inflation in there as well. When you bring those potential funding items together, it's just over $1.4 million, which reduces the overall deficit to just over $2.9 million. So you can see that there's some opportunity still that remain in the overall project of $103 million to continue to work towards developing a number that is going to fall within the $103 million. We also, through McDeeds Creek Elementary School, which is done through a direct finance separate from the bond, with the furniture, fixtures, equipment, and technology purchases that are being finalized there for the final items to be delivered to the school, we will have a clear understanding of exactly how much of that money may be left over as surplus because each project has the same number of items in them. So there's also opportunity for additional surplus through those FFNE and technology items that would be applied to it that we will know more information on at a later date to help us structure the final impact to the overall budget of $103 million.
John, let's be sure, let's be sure we make clear that any surplus on McDeeds Creek is not available for transfer to the bond-funded projects.
Correct.
But it does inform what we might expect as we move into the bond-funded projects. Are all board members clear on that?
Yeah.
Make sure there's no confusion, make sure there's no confusion on the part of the public. Go ahead.
No, that's correct.
You're going to add another point, I might have cut you.
No, at that point, I was going to pause there and answer any questions regarding the bids that were opened. And again, we will bring a full presentation to you at the award at September 3rd.
We'll pause in between each report on each project. Madam Chair, any questions on the Pinehurst Elementary bid opening process?
The award, the apparent lowest bidder, have they done work in Moore County before or nearby?
They have not done work in Moore County. We are in the process of requesting their entire resume of all school projects and scale of projects within the past five to seven years.
And they're a North Carolina company?
They're based out of Wilmington, correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you. The Camp Easter, I'm sorry, McDeeds Creek Elementary School, old habits die hard. McDeeds Creek Elementary School is in its final stages of wrapping up the small touches left in construction as well as stocking the building with all the furniture, fixtures, equipment, and technology items. If you've tried to head out that way, you would have noticed that the road is closed out there as they are finalizing work on the traffic roundabout that they are installing out there. The construction company, JM Thompson, and the town of Southern Pines will be conducting their certificate of occupancy inspection of McDeeds Creek Elementary School on the 12th. The fire marshal has already conducted his walkthrough and all his items have been addressed at this point. The issue tying to the occupancy permit beyond just the school is the completion of the roundabout. The closure of the road has enabled them to expedite their process out there with the construction of it and trying to make sure that we get the roundabout done after, at the completion of this weekend coming up. So the completion of the roundabout, the final inspection of the school will all tie together and have it in place for teachers to respond to the school on the 14th and open the office officially. That is the status of it this time. Does anyone have any questions regarding, oh, I forgot the most important thing, I'm sorry. There will be a ribbon cutting ceremony on August 22nd at 10:00 a.m. at the school. Want to make sure that's on the calendars. Now, if there are any questions on the wrapping up of that project?
No.
Oh, sorry. I was just going to make a comment real quick that we got to tour that McDeeds Creek, and it was just wonderful to see. A little, made me a little anxious that a lot of stuff wasn't done, as far as like furniture and stuff, but I know that they probably have it way under control. But it was wonderful and amazing to see it actually all built and all done, so. It'd be great for the ribbon cutting. Sorry.
That's what I was going to say. Everything is beautiful.
It certainly was beautiful. One question about the landscaping. I know that some of our early plantings have suffered because of the hot weather. Now, is that a cost we must absorb, or did we go to Lowe's and buy those plants and they're guaranteed for a year?
No. All the landscape is warranted for one full year. Any type of construction in North Carolina is warranted for one year. So those plants, we just could not replace them in the heat of the summer.
No point in it.
So all those trees that have unfortunately not survived, they will be replaced here in the fall when the temperatures enable us to do that. So that is an item that we identify in our substantial completion punch list, and we withhold funds until they are complete.
Well, it's been a brutal summer, so well understood why it happened.
The only thing I'd add is being at the tour last week really brought home for us, you know, the first of many openings that are coming our way. And the amount of work that everybody in this room has done, that you have done, Dr. Grimace, that our county commissioners, that our public has done to get these, and parents have got, have put towards ensuring that we have appropriate facilities for our students. And it is, it was really exciting from that standpoint to think about the, where we've come in the past few years. So I hope we acknowledge that too, all the hard work that went just to get to this point. So thank you.
Job well done.
Welcome. The next project talked about is the temporary Pinehurst Elementary School located at Rassie Wicker Park. The modular units are in place, are tied down and have power activated to each one. Ramps and stairs are just about done on the units. The sidewalk is in its final pouring stages this week. We will begin moving into that unit starting tomorrow when we start taking our interactive whiteboards, the smartboards, out of the existing school and placing them in the new one on the walls. On Wednesday, the contractor to move the furniture and the boxes and everything else at the school will begin his work of locating it all in the temporary school. And that will go through Saturday this week. And so the emptying of the existing school should be complete by the end of this weekend. The school during this period of interruption, of having to manage and make sure things are moved in place in the appropriate places at the temporary site, will have their offices closed beginning Wednesday and set to reopen on August 14th at the new site. That's also because our service that we have for data, phones, and everything needs to be just a single switch over so they ring at the new place in a seamless manner. So for those days, the front office will be closed officially at Pinehurst Elementary School and reopen on the 14th at the temporary site. In the interim, any families that still need to enroll a child will be covered by the assistance of central office during that period. Also, on August 16th at 10:00 a.m., we will conduct a similar walkthrough like we did at McDeeds Creek with the board, with the commissioners, and with the village to offer a look, initial look at the completion of the temporary campus. And of course, parents and such will have that opportunity when they come to their open houses at the school. Lot going on out there, but it's looking very nice. Any questions from the board?
Do we have a date of when Pinehurst will be, when you will knock it down? Is that still all kind of up in the air?
We don't have a date on that until we get chance with the contractor to look at award a budget and get their calendar for construction. However, again, we're not awarding the contract until about mid-September, and so they wouldn't be scheduling and mobilizing to demolish until the end of September, beginning of October. And we will be conducting a demolition ceremony of some kind to notify the board and everyone of to witness the first stages. And I will also bring in to the board in September a list of items from that school that we wish to declare surplus to auction off to the public.
Again, we know that trying to get our temporary site set up has had a lot of work involved. So again, we appreciate you, John, and Dr. Bob, and everybody that has lended a hand in that effort, because I know it may not have been easy, especially with the heat and everything that they've had to endure. So we just appreciate the help in getting that up and ready for school.
Appreciate that. It's also been all hands on deck with the school staff, both for McDeeds Creek regarding their school, Pinehurst Elementary's staff, our own maintenance support staff, Roger Leeson and Planning, and also with the support we have from academic services throughout this. It has not been solely me, it has been everybody, and I'll be sure to pass that on to them as well.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Aberdeen Elementary has come along well, it's just past the 50% completion mark out there. They are working towards getting to the point of dry-in, which means that they have the roof structure up and in place, so the interiors can be dry and they begin doing critical systems work under dry conditions. With that phase also comes the opportunity with, means the bearing, which is the exterior masonry walls will be complete, and they can begin installing the insulation in preparation of facing it with the brick. So it's going to start looking a lot different very soon out there. It is continuing to progress well. Unfortunately, it is not one of those that you could drive by and see easily from the roadway. You can only see the school either by visiting the website for progress photos or by traversing back down the construction drive to see it yourself. So you may not have been able to go by as easily as Camp Easter, but I'm of course available and happy to take you out there anytime you want.
Red brick is being constructed on the backside of the building forward, so you happen to go in there, loop around, and come back out, you won't see the red brick yet, but there's a substantial amount of masonry going up on the backside of the building. Any questions? Proceed, Mr. Fray.
Very good. Northmore High School, that is underway.
Skip one.
I did? Southern Pines, I am sorry. Must be my subconscious at work. The Southern Pines Elementary School project is underway. One of the first things they are doing out there is building those retaining walls. As you recall, it's a very steep site that has a lot of tearing of grating coming down, and so some of the building does act as retaining walls. And so those are the critical items they need to construct first, which allows them to continue constructing foundations. So it is an exciting process to watch them form, create, and pour those. And as those finish up, they are already grading the pad area to have the new foundations and utilities installed underneath. There has been some concern with the heavy, heavy rains we've experienced recently where the stormwater management basins have breached with the duration of rain being so brief with such a high volume. The contractor has come back in that instance and has repaired everything and restored the stormwater detention areas back to their original intention and condition. So we hope that we get a little break from the heavy downpours here and let the ground stabilize so that we do not run that problem again moving forward. But again, it's not an easy site to see when you drive by. You can see it from the end of Glover Street and at the top of Carlisle, but if you would like to go out anytime, just please reach out to me, happy to take you to the site.
There is a site that's being developed right off of Morganton Road that's next to the current building that's there that has the dental office and the restaurant. That is not our site, because a lot of folks are asking me if that's our school site. And do you know what that is? What that site is?
Well, Sand Hills Pediatrics is going to be building back there.
That's their building, okay.
But that's also, the landowner has agreed to allow the contractor to borrow from there and to build up a site also otherwhere on their property.
Okay, so it's not ours.
It's not ours.
It's general development with the only current land, business going in there is Sand Hills Pediatrics.
That's only one I'm aware of.
But it's the intent of the developer to develop the property to make it more marketable.
It's convenient to have a pediatrician's office right next to our school.
Which came first?
Yes.
Proceed, Mr. Brath.
Thank you. Now to Northmore High School. All right, so at Northmore High School, the utility relocations where the addition is being built out there is ongoing and finalizing its final process through that. The demolition of the locker rooms on the inside are about done. There's some small items still to finish up inside there, which tie to the utilities, power utilities that serve the entire campus. So as soon as those are relocated and bridged, they will begin to be able to conduct some construction inside there. The modular units that have been moved out of the way are set up on the parking lot where the buses used to be, and that's over on the west side of the site. So that bus parking lot is temporarily turning into our temporary classroom site. We have relocated the modulators that were at Northmore, and we have relocated the modulators, six modulators from Sand Hills Farm Life up to there as well because, as you will recall, one of the buildings on campus is going to be inaccessible during this construction. So we had to accommodate them over with the temporary units in the parking lot. So as those units this week are being finalized and stitched together again, our maintenance staff is building the ramps and walkways out there and powering. and power is being set up to service the units this week. And again, this is another example of all hands on deck coming together and plan to make sure that all classrooms are, have all the furniture and everything in them by the time stu, uh, teachers arrive on the fourteenth. So we're almost there with that one. It'll just take another effort by all this week to make sure we get to that point by the fourteenth. But I know Dr. Grimacey had previously sent an image out there from the site. You can see where it's been started to clear from where the modular units used to reside. And we are working with Principal Jenny Purvis to identify a groundbreaking ceremony date for when the students of the school can participate with the board as well and the commissioners during that activity.
Is there a place on campus where a photo of the work that's going to be done or the, the schematics are available for students to use? Is that something that, that we will keep at Northmore in case there are questions when students walk by?
That's a great point. I will make sure they have one of our presentation boards out there of the new plan. Board out there will make sure Ms. Purvis has that to display.
I imagine that'd be exciting for the students to see as they're, as they're watching this change happening. They can have a visual of that in front of them.
I will make sure she has that.
Any other questions about the Northmore project?
And the only thing tied to that is the Sand Hills Farm Life. There are still two modular units remaining out there that is going to be relocated at, by the end of this week, which means out at the Sand Hills Farm Life site, we have some remediation of grade out there and elements that need to be restored from where these units were. So we'll be restoring them back to their original condition, raking them out, pulling the utilities out of the way, getting rid of any broken up concrete. And then, of course, we can't plant any Bermuda seed right now to grow, just burn right up. We'll make sure we prep it and get some rye on it this winter and then get the Bermuda in it next spring. So that'll have a chance to go back to its original condition before modulators were added. So there's still a little work out there just to clean it up, but all the debris and everything will be cleaned up ahead of the teachers responding to work on the fourteenth.
John, did we get any trailers moved from Vess Lakeview or are they still there?
No, they remain there. That is something that I will be also highlighting and pointing out in my next presentation.
So this is another one where we should be really excited, because just remember back a few years ago when we had to add a couple of modulators to Sand Hills Farm Life and the opening of McDeeds Creek will now allow us to get rid of, rid of them. And that, that, I remember when it went right in front, right on that front lawn.
There was no place else to put it.
There was no place else to put it and we talked about putting it on the tennis courts and we got a lot of pushback from that. And it's going to be a whole new school. And I'm, I'm just very excited for that community. And they'll be reassessing what a smaller size is like. They'll have to learn to live that way too. It's different. But it's also exciting to have that campus come back to, to what it was designed for. So I'm excited for that. So if I drive by that one right in front is gone, is that one gone already? The two of them are gone.
There was one down by the tennis courts on the side. And then there were two that were right out front. They're all gone.
They're all gone, okay. Thank you.
We have to tidy it up a little bit.
Yeah, just a little site cleanup.
The modulators are gone, but it's not pretty yet.
And that started this whole conversation.
Yes, ma'am.
I think it's, or a part of it at least. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
With your permission, Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
Okay. Mr. Brath, you'll invite some friends to join you and I'll trust you for the, and trust the introductions to you. Madam Chair, as they're getting ready, today we are going to review factors that justify the need for student assignment planning. And John will review the history of the school capital plan, how it came together, how enrollment projections drove a lot of the decisions we had to make in addition to the need for modernization of some of our schools, the need to consolidate some of our schools. And so now we've built four, we're in the process of building four eight-hundred student elementary schools. But when we get those built, we've got to then look at how we assign students among these schools. And so while we're at it, given the amount of disruption we have, we think that the time in the history of our school district has come where we need to look at the whole school district, as we've discussed before, particularly at our middle schools, because it's very difficult to reassign student, students to elementary schools without looking at middle school. And then also it's fair to say that as we've moved into this process, we've learned about some new needs or some needs that maybe turned out to be more urgent than we thought they were. John's got all that covered in his presentation. He now has his presentation committee together. And I've done all the introducing I'm going to do. And I hope they're ready, because, Mr. Brath.
Thank you, Dr. Grimacey. Once again, this is not the efforts of me. This is an efforts of an entire team of people. I just happen to be the face of the vest. That is the honor to present it to you today. But joining me, of course, we have Dr. Tim Locklear, who has been with us throughout this entire process and working side by side and helping to develop everything along the way. And appearing for the first time, we have Josh Ranky from Raimy Kemp and Associates. He is here as our traffic impact analysis specialist that we had brought in on the project. And he will be discussing the impacts and potential routing solutions that we have been looking at over the many different scenarios for the schools in this presentation. So as Dr. Grimacey said, we're going to start with a little bit of a historical path to remind everybody of what got us to where we are here today. So back in two thousand fourteen, the board had approved a master facility plan. And it identified the projects that are associated to this. They, they knew back then that there needed, something needed to be done to relieve the conditions at the schools that they were experiencing at that time. In two thousand thirteen, there were community meetings that were held and a process began with input from key stakeholders throughout Moore County. And it came to accumulation, the development of a ma, this master facility plan. In October two thousand fifteen, the Board of Education approved an updated master facility plan. This took some time to develop and to come to agreement with. Had a lot to do with the order, because there was not the opportunity to obtain all the funding at one time. It was going to have to be broken down into bits of opportunity to fund and grow and begin to implement. And so with this, at the time, there were the four identified projects, the Advanced Career Center along with the new elementary school and the replacement schools. So at the time this was developed, one of the great changes that happened in the process of the two thousand fourteen board adopted master facility plan to this one, you will note is the capacities and the built capacity of the schools. The original plan had them at six hundred and fifty students. Back in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, you may recall where we realized that should that hold true, that most of the schools would open with possibly modular units on them day one. And so at that time, the board recognized that the growth of Moore County and the need required a change to the capacity of the schools. This is important, because it also provided opportunity at the other adjacent area schools. With this plan in place, the board worked with the commissioners and began to develop plans to finance and provide the funding for the projects. In January two thousand eighteen, Moore County approved a direct financing of McDeeds Creek Elementary School. And in May of two thousand eighteen, the public overwhelmingly approved the bond referendum for the three schools. So the planning of the new schools has a base beginning of identifying the issue at hand that is causing the need for the new schools. Didn't work. There we go. For pretty much the past two decades, ORED Laboratory with the Institute of Transportation Research and Education at North Carolina State University has been working with Moore County and Moore County schools to develop these charts of tracking and understanding the growth of the community and the impact that growth has on the schools. They have been presenting these heat charts to the district for those over twenty years. And it demonstrates clearly in there the areas of great concern and as well as some cases, areas of opportunity. So this presentation here is from January two thousand eighteen. This was the most recent complete land use analysis ORED had conducted through two thousand seventeen that was presented to the board in January of two thousand eighteen. And you can see in here, just again, red is bad, green is good. So you can see what we were looking at as a school district with relation to our ability to accommodate the students at those schools. And recently, it's hard to read from where you're at. We have updated the projections to carry out to twenty twenty-eight in there. And you can see there really not that much change from what the previous year's chart had indicated. We also included in here some historical. The two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year is blocked out vertically with a darker outline on the border, sort of to the first third point. So everything to the left of that is for historical information, so you can see and identify trends and opportunities. One of the things to keep in mind here is when you take a look at these charts and you start looking at some of the numbers, these are facts that have been presented to the board for many years and it's been evident throughout these charts. Last year, there were two thousand eight hundred and twenty-three middle school students. Well, we have the capacity for two thousand eight hundred and forty-eight. Just another twenty-five students' capacity at all our middle schools. We knew this problem. We also knew that we're over, there were over four thousand students attending the high schools that had the capacity for three thousand two hundred and seventy-seven. These are things that we knew. We knew that, that we had capacity problems just meeting those grade levels at our schools coming up. The results of this has been modular units. We have had to place modular units at many of our campuses. There were six at West Pine Middle, Pinehurst High School, Pinecrest, I'm sorry, High School has seventeen and Union Pines has eighteen modular classroom units. Sixty-four percent of our modular units reside at middle schools and high schools. This has created a, an understanding of the need that while we are evaluating, that yes, we have to, in our master facility plan, recognize the need for an additional middle school, recognize the master facility plan, the need for relief at high schools. But the first group of projects we needed to look at was the elementaries to bring the opportunity for relief there. But then at the same time, is there a way that we can have a positive impact on these over-capacity situations? We're going to go into greater detail a little later in the presentation on the guiding principles, but I wanted to put this up as a reminder that this is our guideline as the planning team has gone through the process of evaluating opportunities and options and scenarios for the student assignment process. You can see balance, efficiency, planning and community. These were elements that the board believed that needed to be addressed to the greatest extent possible with each of the, every scenario that we evaluated and at each and every school. We're going to talk about this again a little bit in greater detail, but it ties together with it. And that was after the McDeeds Creek Elementary School attendance area, the board reinforced further areas of focus for the planning team. And these were identified in these four areas. So we had the need, and I should have been flipping these along the way. We had the guiding principles of the balance and the efficiency, the planning, the community. And you can see how here they tie together with the planning for the new elementary schools. We had some unresolved issues still to address with the McDeeds Creek Elementary School utilization and also to the extent possible demographics and how they all tie in together. The middle schools, I mentioned earlier, as far as our capacity and number of middle school students, the greatest impact to those are in the Area One and Area Three location. These are your West Pine Middle, your Southern Middle, your New Century and your Cranes Creek Middle Schools. So when you combine those schools together, you have a combined amount, capacity of two thousand five hundred and seventy-eight seats. You can see that in the bar graph, the highlighted green area is this forward coming school year, the two thousand nineteen, twenty. To the left is a historical and so to the right is where we're going. The red line represents our capacity limit and you can see how that has exceeded moving forward.
And that's New Century, Cranes Creek, Southern and West Pine Middle.
Correct.
This is all students, all capacity. And we are just now to the place where we have a number of students that's basically equal to the total capacity. And going forward, the number of students will be exceeding that. And then as we get out about four or five years, it'll start to increase well beyond that capacity. So we've got about five to ten years to be looking at potentially building another middle school.
This represents West Pine Middle School with its historic, the current and the forecasted membership and the impact you can see there with its capacity. The red line, seven hundred students, that is the capacity of that school. You can see for every bar on that chart how it exceeds that. Through our process of evaluating the choices and the options, we look at the schools and considering the growth, we also need to make sure we take a look at what does it look like in the school itself when something like this happens? Twenty twenty-eight, according to these numbers, that's one thousand one hundred and sixty-one students.
In a school designed for?
Seven hundred.
Repeat that, please?
One thousand one hundred and sixty-one students at a school with a capacity for seven hundred students. That is a percentage of one hundred and sixty-six percent in twenty twenty-eight. This would require at least twenty modular units to be placed out there in addition to the six they already have.
To be a total of twenty-six?
Total of twenty-six. Your student meal service times would be dramatically impacted, significant. If you stop and think about some of these activities and experiences of the student, you have your morning drop-off with over one thousand one hundred students, what that line and the impact on Route Two Eleven would be and the time that line would take to move through. You also have the additional congestion of having the elementary. That is correct. You also have your meal service times. This school was designed to accommodate serving as school capacity of seven hundred. You increase that this dramatically, you're going to have students being served lunch before ten and at, well after one o'clock, creating that hungry syndrome of you're going to be really hungry throughout your morning or in the afternoon. You're also looking at the afternoon pickup line and the time it'll take for that to happen as well as the congestion. With twenty-six individual mobile classroom units out there, you also compromise the safety of the site, especially in inclement weather, moving students out of those units into other spaces for other coursework and studies as well as students' access to other programs. These all have impacts to that level. And what that would look like potentially would be this. You're looking at an aerial of the school. On the bottom, you can see the drop-off, a little circle parking lot where the front main entry is. You can see where the buses are on the left. There are six existing mobile classroom units out there. On the right side, there are three located on the lower right corner. And nestled kind of in the middle there, above that main entry point, are three worked into that little courtyard. The blue squares represent the additional units that would need to be placed out there.
That's not even all of them. That doesn't add up to twenty.
Fourteen. Well, fourteen would be added.
Now there are twenty.
And there are already six there.
I wonder if by air, I will amend this and have it replaced in there. I think it might have been on a layer that hid. I apologize. There were twenty added. There were twenty added there.
Well, it looks a lot like the current Pinehurst Elementary School even at this point.
But worse.
Where almost half your students are not even in the building.
Yeah, there's others, and I apologize. I think when I read them and put them in there, they are on a separate layer that must be in the background, and they didn't come forward, and that's my fault. I will get that corrected here.
Work with Sonya to make sure this is made accurate, and then make sure board members are prompted when it's ready, Miss, I'm sorry.
It'll be done after the meeting today.
Ms. Caldwell, thank you.
I was just gonna say, so you're, you would add additional twenty with the six that you have on there? Or were you counting the six with the fourteen?
Correct, adding twenty.
Okay.
That's if we didn't assign, yeah, if we did, if we did not assign children from West Pine Middle to some other school, then this would be the destiny of West Pine Middle School.
In two thousand twenty-eight.
Based on current projections. Okay?
If we take just another sample of the adjacent school, West Pine Elementary School, its capacity is six hundred students, and that's a red line going across there. The green bar representing this next school year. And you can see how this next school year is gonna be just above its capacity amount. But its trend obviously is continuing to climb and grow past that. You will be looking at a school of approximately eight hundred and thirty students for a school designed for six hundred. Again, similar situation when you think about the potential impacts, what this would mean to look at. You would look at twelve modular classroom units out there, the school currently does not have any. And so we would look to strategically place them around the facility in this, something rel, close to this representation. You're also looking at similar impacts to the ability and times that we need to feed the students, the pickup drop-off queuing lines and times that those will take, and the impacts this will have moving young students in and out of the school and around to different structures on the campus. Other examples, when we take a look, and this is important to look at too, is you look at Southern Middle School. This shows again its capacity of seven hundred students. You can see for the school year, we currently completed, and the one coming up, we're really close to that number. But the forecast shows a slight dip down there to stay under that, and yet at West Pine, we have the inverse happening, where it's continuing to spike and climb above that. So you can see the opportunity for some capacity here at Southern Middle. Look at West End Elementary School, and that has a growing trend out there in its capacity of five hundred students and how it is gonna continue to exceed that moving forward. And that is a very challenging site. There is not a lot of available space out there to put multiple modular units. There is, there's geography constraints, the back of the site has steep drop-offs to it, it's a very narrow linear site. As you recall how close it feels when you drive by it on Two Eleven. It's a very challenging site to try to accommodate mobile units as a solution out here, if at all.
Are we losing any frontage because of the Two Eleven widening as well?
The plans due currently for the widening project indicate that there is, the easement setback is gonna come onto our property some, but it will not impact our parking out there. So it'll be just eaten up in the lawn area.
Do we know who owns that land right beside, like, if you're facing the school to the right?
It's all ours, all the way over.
Those trees where they have the Saturday morning flea market sales and things like that?
We own from the church property adjacent to it on the west side, all the way to the road, and at the moment, the road name slits me.
Yeah, wherever that, go to the dump that way.
And there's a ball field on the corner there.
Right, okay.
Moore County Board of Education owns everything in between.
So whose ball field is that, ours or community?
Moore County Board of Education. Cranes Creek Middle School. This school is unique. We'll talk about a little more in this presentation, but currently its capacity is four hundred and seventy-eight students, represented by the red line, and you can see how in past years and current years and moving forward for majority of the years, how it's gonna be below that capacity limit. New Century Middle School, again, a school of seven hundred student capacity, has historically been under that limit, and you can see it's starting to trend a little growth out there, where eventually it will exceed that moving forward. Some of our schools experience the opposite, that challenges. West Moore is an example of that, when you take a look at its capacity of four hundred students, and how the historical and the projected trends are keeping it well below that moving forward. We mentioned earlier the challenges of the high schools and the ability at all the high schools to serve all the students. North Moore is following a similar trend that West Moore is, it's occurring further out than West Moore currently is. But our current year that we just completed, North Moore was under its capacity of just about five hundred and sixty students. And moving forward, it's gonna hover there and then projected to dip a little bit based on the grades that'll be moving through the schools that are currently feeding into it. So it'll continue that decline later on, about years five through ten. And just as with the other two high schools, Union Pines and Pinecrest, they both have been historically above the capacity. When you look at Union Pines, has historically been that way and continues that same trend moving forward. This is put in here as just a reminder that, yes, we are aware of this, and the board is well aware of the high school situation. However, that is not at this time an item that can be addressed, it is something that needs to be addressed in the near future to bring the ability to get the high schools to a level of service more equivalent to its capacity.
John, I have a question. When, when administration presents their reassignment plan to us, well, you have charts there showing how the reassignment plan will affect all the charts you've shown us here, because obviously we're not gonna keep, keep those schools like they are now.
We, we can have the similar charts to show the impacts and changes to them when we do the presentation, but that is not, the format of that has not been decided this time, but we will definitely.
Oh, I know, I, I mean, in the future, because then we, that'll be the only time we can really see when we need to do a new middle school.
We'll take that as input, Mr. Dennison, thank you. Yeah, we'll take that under consideration. We haven't started to, we haven't finalized the plan.
It is important to note the data tables that Numerex shows us, the capacity impact based on scenarios.
We're, we're expecting a lot of improvement in this area.
Yes, sir.
I, I think what Mr. Dennison's getting at is Numerex in the past has provided charts where the numbers are there. What we could do is get rid of the historical data on this one and start with nineteen twenty through twenty twenty-eight, and then have these same bar graphs with one bar showing what it would've been without student reassignment, and then right next to it, what the benefit is of student reassignment. That, that would not be that complicated to do. It's gonna add a little, we know it's gonna take some time to present whatever it is we bring back.
No, understood.
We'll, we'll take that under consideration, Mr. Dennison, see what we can't do to make that visual representation. We'd have to do it school by school, and on September third, unlike today, we'd have to do all the schools. Today, we're doing a representative sample, so just, bring your popcorn.
You can't, you can't have a chart unless you know what you're gonna do for sure.
You know, I wanted to add too, although you, you just mentioned Union Pines and the overcrowding there as well as at Pinecrest, a lot of people don't realize what huge modular buildings and modular classrooms already sit behind those schools because they're not easily visible.
That's right.
But we've got a lot of students already in mobile units, full-time.
And we're very fortunate that a lot of our students in the high schools are going to Sand Hills Community College for a portion of the day, so they're off-campus, so it's not as dire as it looks.
That's benefiting us in the, in the short term, but in the long term, as, as those numbers increase, we'll, we'll, we'll feel that, so, but I, we appreciate the board's input on that.
Very good. And then with the work previously done by the board, remember, this has been a two-step process. The first step that the board conducted was that they addressed the need to develop a student assignment area for the opening of McDeeds Creek Elementary School this August. So the board and working with the guy, the staff and the planning committee consisting of Dr. Grimace, Dr. Locklear, myself, Dr. Metcalf, and Numerex had put together through the guiding principles and direction of the board, scenarios for consideration which the board responded to. And the end result was the adoption of this student assignment plan for McDeeds Creek. And as mentioned before, there were some unresolved items in here that still needed to be addressed. But going back to the guiding principles, because these were the elements that were used to develop that solution that we have continued to carry through in the process to get to what the superintendent will present on September third. The guiding principles are intended to provide the direction to the planning committee on elements they need to consider and attempt to resolve to the highest extent possible with each and every solution. Give examples here. The principle of balance, that is intended to improve situations where a school is exceeding its capacity at extreme levels, such as what we looked at and talked about at West Pine Middle School, and then other schools that have capacity, such as Southern Middle School. It also is to address large variations in student performance as well. So schools that may be having lower performance and higher to try to bring that into an equitable level as well.
Let me correct that, John. No, it's more to make sure that student reassignment planning doesn't upset the balance any more than necessary, that you make sure that schools that are high-performing remain high-performing, and that if, if, if you can do anything to affect those that aren't as low-performing, then, then that's, that's a benefit. But you don't do that on purpose to do that, that's a secondary measure that we have. I just wanna make sure.
It's a reporting tool that we have.
Yeah, the way you worded that, I wanna make sure that it's, it's, it's very specific and very accurate to it.
It's not to have a negative impact, and it is a reporting tool.
We want to avoid any negative impact, right?
The principle of community is also critical as maintaining transparency of the process, seeking input from the communities as well. There have been numerous presentations that have been presented to the board, that has been presented to the community and forums, providing lots of opportunities for input and opportunities for voice of opinion. Also, the principle of community leads out to providing a level of, highest level of information and soliciting feedback. And throughout this process, that has been a key component of the board and of Superintendent Grimace to make sure that everything we put out here is accurate, is a true reflection of the data and everything that we have seen, and it provides ample time for people to respond to, not just the board but the community at large. Efficiency is, again, goes back to the example Dr. Grimace had, which was about not having negative impacts on solutions to current conditions that they may be experiencing. Whether it's taking a look at ride times for students, and that they are not moved into longer ride times that come to it, no additional operational burden for costs for transportation or staffing, and also on child nutrition as well. Planning is to always consider maintaining that vision looking forward. We cannot work within a window, just looking at two thousand nineteen twenty, we must look into a reasonable window of the ten years that we have exemplified through these charts. We wanna make sure also that the planning does not in the future impose harm on any adjacent or changed school that's impacted. We have worked with the advisory committees throughout the process of not just the McDeeds Creek, but also for the process we've been going through now. We have also been working in public forums and presentations to the board, as well as website communications for frequently asked questions and clarifications on plans. The desired outcomes, which have been also factored in as emphasis to accompany the guiding principles, are elements in here that, again, to the highest levels that we can, and to the extents possible, accommodate these situations in the schools. There do not exist a lot of opportunities to improve capacity in existing schools. Okay? A lot of our schools you saw are well over capacities, you saw examples of some that are slightly under capacities. Our greatest opportunities is when the core capacity of a school is less than the classroom capacity of, I'm sorry.
No, it's the other way around, John.
Yeah, I said that backwards, is more than the classroom capacity of the schools. What this means is if you take a look at a previously identified school with the board, Cameron Elementary, the current classroom capacity is sixty-six percent of the core. That means it has the ability to service more students than classrooms are on the campus. And so they have the opportunity for another thirty-four percent students out there, which means they would need classrooms. That's as presented to the board, we looked at the opportunity with the addition being built at North Moore High School, when that is complete, we can move that large six-classroom unit from North Moore over to Cameron and service those students and bring that school up to its core capacity. So. Excuse me. Another example is Carthage Elementary, where its capacity is sixty-one percent of its core capacity. That has a site challenge, though. That is, again, a site that is bound in, and there's no opportunity to place modular units out there. Cranes Creek Middle School, its capacity right now is seventy percent of the core capacity. Taking a look at where we currently are with it, this is from the previous chart, the four hundred and seventy-eight student capacity that's defined out there, and that's restricted by the classrooms that are built. Its core capacity is seven hundred. If we were able to provide classrooms out there, we can now take that capacity from four hundred and seventy-eight to seven hundred students. What that would do is when you think about the middle schools and the challenges that we had there from the previous slides, that it provides the opportunity to mitigate some of that by adding mobile classroom units there and creating more capacity without expending a lot of capital funds.
You jumped ahead a little too fast, can we go back to the previous slide, please?
Right.
And, and so before you leave that, could you please explain what core is? What, what is core capacity?
Thank you for reminding me. Core capacity is the ability of a school to serve the number of students that are there through its central program spaces, such as the cafeteria, the media center, the gym, the admin support spaces. Those are the abilities of those functions to support a number of students in classrooms. So in the case of Cranes Creek, its core was designed to support seven hundred students. At the time it was built, to reduce the cost, they only built classrooms to serve four hundred and seventy-eight students, with the opportunities to expand out there in the future, to grow the building to match the core.
So the suggestion of this slide is that, that by some means, short of actual construction, if we can bring the classroom capacity up to seven hundred to match the core capacity, we could get two hundred more students into Cranes Creek and still be at or below capacity?
Exactly. We created the opportunity for over two hundred students without breaching capacity of a school.
Right, so how might you do that?
Good question, Dr. Grimace, and the response to that is, we have a sudden surplus of modular units in the district. We have, thankfully have the surplus because we did need some to move to North Moore High School to facilitate that construction project. We also have some units that are available to go now to other locations. If we take a look at North Moore High School, we relocated the existing units on-site to the new temporary location, the bus lot. At Sand Hills Farm Life, the elements that are highlighted, the mobile units highlighted in green, have been moved to North Moore High School. So those units have been moved to North Moore High School to use right now to facilitate the construction of the school and disruption to the existing building. the construction of the school and disruption to the existing building. The other elements, elements, I'm sorry, the other modular units such as those identified in blue for Pinehurst Elementary School are available to move to other locations. We can begin, because these units still have opportunity for some service to the district, and we already know from our previous earlier slides that we do have a problem with our middle school growth. It is far exceeding our ability to provide seats, and we will be needing mobile units to solve that problem. We have the opportunity to be prepared and move the units into place so that they will be ready at the schools to accommodate the growth. So at Pinehurst Elementary School, we can move units to Cranes Creek Middle School this year. They would be ready for the next school year to be potentially put into use. The highlighted yellow mobile units are units that are in poor condition and are being identified as opportunities for surplus. We necessarily do not want to move them, have to refurb them to the level they would need to be. It would be best if they were surplus and disposed of. Some of them we will move here to the central office to use as temporary storage. We have some items from Pinehurst Elementary that need to be placed into storage until the new school is completed, and then at which time they can go back. So we have that from Pinehurst Elementary School, Farm Life. We have those elements to go to Northmore. And at Vass Lakeview Elementary, you'll remember from the forecast charts, even with the solutions that were provided during the McDeeds Creek Elementary School student assignment, we were still looking at we will exceed the capacity of that school in the future with the growth happening down east from that school. So we are keeping those units there as a hedge because we believe that they will be needed in the near years ahead out there at that school. That school is going to continue to witness that growth. Once the units are done with Northmore High School, there's an opportunity to relocate those. A large classroom unit would relocate to Cameron Elementary School in 2021, and we can relocate others to Cranes Creek Middle School to accommodate the opportunity there to achieve that 700 student capacity level. So this is just a chart indicating what the potential is to move where and for what year, and what frees up to use at other places, and which items we need to keep where they are. There are some units that we have not identified at Aberdeen Primary and Southern Pines Primary. At this point, we will throughout the year ahead evaluate other locations where those may be needed, and if in the end they're not needed, then they will bring a recommendation of surplus to the board if necessary. But this gives you an idea of the opportunity instead of either selling them all off and then turning around and having to buy units in the very near future, that we can strategically place them in position to help schools and to help with the ability to provide seats to students.
Before we move on, John, we're going to, Ms. Carter, give me just a second. I want to emphasize something here. These modulators at Pinehurst, do you have the option to leave them there?
No, we don't, sir. Pinehurst does have to move.
Yeah, you've been saying opportunities, they're available, maybe, do we have to move them?
We absolutely have to move them.
Okay, they have to go somewhere, right?
Move them or sell them.
And so what are your options?
So the options are we move them or we sell them.
Okay. And if you don't move them to Cranes Creek, where are they going to go?
They're going to go up for auction and sold and done.
Okay, so why wouldn't we sell them? I mean, hey, there's cash.
Because there is a need to place them into service to hedge and provide the opportunity at Cranes Creek Elementary School to grow.
Okay, that's one thing. But what if somebody says the money's more important? Why wouldn't we just sell them and then if we need them later, turn around and buy some other new ones?
Part of that has to do with costs. You will not be able to retrieve the cost of selling that you would for paying for them.
What does that mean?
If we were to sell them, we would anticipate a maximum of approximately $5,000 to buy, to sell them. You will recall that we bought some lightly used ones previously to place in the front of Sandhills Farm Life for $20,000 each. So it would come at a greater cost if we were to try to sell these for a low return and then have to turn around and buy them at a greater expense.
So we're suggesting that this saves money. It makes better use of the taxpayers, the taxpayer-supported buildings that we have in place, and it does in the long run save a lot of money moving forward. But it would be a way that we can make better use of Cranes Creek Middle School, given that all the previous charts and graphs show that that's inevitable. We're going to need that space, that core space. Okay, excuse me, Ms. Carter.
Well, we've sort of gotten to my answer anyway, because what I wanted to know is when you buy one brand new, what do you hope the life expectancy will be?
One of the things about, we call them modular units. Sometimes they call them mobile, and Dr. Grimacy and I have had this discussion. They're not really as mobile as you think they are. When you place them on a site, that's great for a brand new one, one-time move, one-time set. The more times you move a unit, the more wear that it receives. If a unit is to be placed on a campus, I will share that there are plenty of school districts across North Carolina that have mobile units that date back to the 60s, and they have been there since the 60s in the exact same spot. And that has been good in the sense that they've been able to sustain that type of life because they're not being moved around. But we would anticipate that the more you move one, you shorten its life cycle dramatically just through the wear of that. I cannot give you how long it can last, you know, 40, 50, 60 years, depends how well you maintain it, just like with our buildings. Our buildings, we have seen that in some cases due to the lack of funding for maintaining, preventative maintenance and replacement of systems, the impact that has had on them and shortening their life cycles. And so it all comes down to your ability to maintain the structures throughout its life.
I just know we have them in other places as well, and we used to always call those temporary classrooms. And somehow temporary has evolved into permanent classrooms.
And that a lot of times unfortunately is true. You will see a lot of schools, like I mentioned earlier, to go back to the 60s of being in place. Okay? So what could this potentially look at at Cranes Creek Middle School? Again, this school does have a core capacity that was built for 700 students, and then its classroom support structures were built short of that. So we would place out there, the blue represents the modular units, we would move this year from Pinehurst Elementary School out to that campus. And then the orange-yellow ones are the units that would move from Northmore High School in 2021 out the campus. It's just a suggested placement of them. We would continue to work with the principal on maybe which side of the courtyard serves better, et cetera, with the placement of them. But just to give you an idea of what it would take out there to provide the additional space needed to create a 700 student school and to demonstrate that we do have that capacity and ability with our mobile units inventory.
Okay, again, let's make this abundantly clear, make sure there's no confusion. The difference between this diagram and other diagrams that we've shown is that these modular classrooms will bring Cranes Creek up to its core capacity. It's designed for 700, and by adding these modulators, you bring it up to that core capacity and no more.
Correct.
In the previous slide that we showed of West Pine Middle School, those would be modular classrooms that take West Pine Middle School well beyond its core capacity. It would take it beyond 700, as much as 1,100 at that point. The problem with that is, is that you no longer have the core to support it. You don't have the appropriately sized cafeteria, gymnasium, media center, hallways, administrative structure for that. And so in this case, modular classrooms, although temporary, we never think that that's the final remedy, this approach here at least allows us to use the appropriate capacity of Cranes Creek Middle School during this next five, next three to eight years, 10 years, while the capacity grows, while the number of students exceed the capacity, and we're in no position to build another school or build on to Cranes Creek. This is a remedy that we could employ to manage that mismatch between the number of students and the total capacity of New Century, Cranes Creek, Southern Middle School, and West Pine Middle School. Is that correct?
That's correct. And it also begins to provide opportunity to apply towards the guiding principles of efficiency, of balance, and of planning.
Okay, thank you. Board members, questions or thoughts or feedback?
Would we be doing something similar to this for the core capacity of Cameron?
Yes, ma'am, that's the point.
This is what we talked about, correct, that we would move the six classroom unit from Northmore High School in 2021 to Cameron. That will bring that school up to its core capacity to service students and accommodate them, creating opportunity there as well.
That has been our plan since we engaged in the student reassignment planning for McDeeds Creek, and so the public has been able to manage that. I think we've suggested that we might be able to do the same thing at Cranes Creek, but it wasn't until we connected the dots between the modular classrooms that had to leave the Pinehurst campus, and they have to go somewhere. We either have to sell them low and then later on buy high, or remain, use them and reinvest them, plant them someplace and not move them any more than necessary. So instead of bringing them here and then moving them again later, we just move them right to Cranes Creek. The only other option would be to sell them at a very low price, knowing that within five to eight years, we're going to have to spend four times as much at least to replace them. So this right now is an area where we would appreciate your, at least your informal feedback today to let us know as we continue our planning in response to this.
Well, it's definitely cost effective, and as we continue to look at reassignments, it gives us an opportunity to make possibly a new shift for students that may be closer to some of those areas. So moving once definitely would save dollars, especially for, I mean, we've got some good-looking modular units, and to be able to save those and repurpose in a different location would definitely be feasible.
Well, it seems to be fiscally responsible as well, and we don't know when we can look at additional, what our additional needs are in the facilities plan. If we have a solution at this point that we can use to buy some time for, you know, any further construction, I think that's a wise choice on our part for the taxpayers and for us. Like you said, why move them twice if we don't have to? So let's go ahead and make some of those adjustments now. As long as they're in good shape, you know, don't move any of the ones that are really not going to make it.
And that's why on this previous chart, we have gone through already and inspected the ones that we definitely do not want to risk and put additional capital into repair to the level it needs to be. I also want to point out that while this opportunity for Cranes Creek is a benefit to that, it does not necessarily solve the balance of not exceeding our seat capacity relative to our cores at the middle schools of Area 1 and 3. It does go a long way to helping with that. Does not replace still the need for that future middle school.
It just buys time.
Yes.
Gives a little breathing in that.
Buys time.
If they're not in use, how do you, how do you secure them so that, how do you secure them and keep them updated so that they don't fall into disrepair?
Well, the units, if there's issues with trim or things on the outside, we go out and replace them, roofing, repair, replace as needed. So we do our standard maintenance on them just as we do with our buildings as well. So that doesn't really change. It's the sequence of construction for these are meant to be light, they're meant to flex and things, and as things flex, things wear.
So you don't have to put the steps in or the ramps in right away? You're just going to place them for now?
We could place these out there and then come as work availability permits to build the ramps and the steps over the course of the year. These are not intended to move here from Pinehurst in the next two months to Cranes Creek and then to immediately put them in service. It is to be ready for the school year '21, '22.
So we have some time.
For the opportunity for service.
You've got, on the chart back on '24, you've got four units at Vass Lakeview, and they're marked to remain at Vass Lakeview.
Yes, and that goes back to the question.
You didn't talk much about the capacity at Vass Lakeview and anticipated growth as well, so we would leave those there thinking we're going to be putting them back into service? Or would they, are they still already being used and would continue to be used?
They would be placed back in service. There would not be the immediate need for them, but there soon would be without clicking back approximately 20 slides or something to demonstrate on the charts that have been provided.
Okay, I can go back and look at that.
Even with the impact changes, Vass Lakeview still is going to exceed its core levels in the soon years ahead, very soon, and so we will need them to remain in service. Again, that is due to the growth that is happening down east from the school, down the peninsula.
Now, that sheet you're referring to, though, isn't necessary because redistricting would affect that sheet.
Redistricting could potentially impact.
Yeah, well, it will. I mean, that's the whole reason why we're doing it. Yeah, that sheet will no longer be valid. So based on that, when your statement is correct, but it won't be until we finish our student reassignment plan until we can really answer the question. So you're given somewhat of a definitive answer, but it's more of a speculative answer at this point. The truth is that those modulators at Vass Lakeview could still move. As of today, we don't, we don't know that they would necessarily have to move until we're completed with the student reassignment planning process. So that's, we want to clarify, make sure that we're not confusing anybody.
We hope we're moving enough children.
What Mr. Grab says could be accurate, but it also is still subject to change as we reevaluate the student reassignment plan, which is heavily dependent on a professional analysis of traffic congestion and bus route times.
That is, isn't it? It's a good lead-in.
We need one.
Successful transition.
We need one.
You're done hearing my voice, so right now I'm happy to turn it over to Josh Ranki through Amy Kep. He will introduce himself to you as well as company, and then take you through some of the work and process they have and studies they have completed.
Madam Chair, before we get into this transition, is this a good place for a break? Five-minute break, please?
We usually wait till the end, but I will entertain a five-minute break if Ms. Thompson would like one, yes.
That would be great.
I am so sorry. Would you mind? We just keyed you up as well. We just keyed you up as well.
You won't be taking five minutes?
From that direction until they flow into the circle. So as you go through and analyze this and reflect back upon it, just understand what you're looking at.
All right, in this next table, essentially, we've got current bus rider travel times. And this was data that was provided to us. Essentially, we sorted through it, came up with maximum route times, minimum route times, average route times, and median route times. And the, to give you an idea, the times are based on, for traveling to school, it's when the first student is on the bus until the bus arrives at the school and parks. And then for the PM, it's the reverse. It's when the school bus starts to leave the school until the last student is dropped off. So your AM is, that's kind of how they, how these were calculated. We then broke these down. Essentially, we had data for across the county. We broke it down into the different areas. So area one, two, and three would be corresponding to the high schools. So area one is Union Pines High School. Area two is North Moore High School. And then three is Pinecrest. So those are kind of at the top of the table there. You see the, the different maximum times. So some of those are pretty long. That's just the, the worst case we saw during the data collected. The minimum times, you can see those are significantly lower. Then we get into average time. So that's pretty typical of what we've seen. They correspond pretty well to the median times as well. So averages is going to be, take all the numbers and whatever, when you calculate the number of runs per time, that's what you get. And then the median is sort of that mid-ground there. Are there any questions, kind of how, how we collected that data or what we're looking at?
Sorry, where are you getting the data from exactly?
We, this was provided by Moore County. So they had the bus drivers, is it the bus drivers? Or was there somebody on the buses?
Through our Senovia systems, where we're able to track and identify when the first student gets on a bus and to when the bus parks at the school. So through Senovia systems, we use on all our buses, we're able to download and get all this information to the consultant.
Great, thank you.
And so for, for each one of the areas, no matter the different directions that they were coming to and from, what this is indicating is, is that for any given direction, for example, area one, it was at an hour and 59 minutes. Is that what you're?
That is correct. For area one, it's a maximum for the schools.
Doesn't matter, okay.
And that's the AM, so it'd be going to school.
Okay.
And once again, you know, sort of patterns we saw are, you know, there, there are, it tended to be oddly enough, some of the PM ones were higher, which is a little surprising sometimes because PM traffic tends to be a little lighter. But this is where it was an average for area one, taking all the, the data we had, and then saying in the morning, it's, it's the first student gets on until the school parks at, the bus parks at the school, and then the reverse in the PM. So when the bus leaves the school until the last student gets off. And so we also broke it down, while we had the areas in the top there, then we broke it down between elementary, middle, and high schools. And you're, you've got your same thing, max time, in time, average times. There you can see, it appears the high school routes were actually typically the shorter routes. Elementary were kind of middle, and the middle schools were the longest there. And then we did break down the exceptional children. We isolated that in its own category there. So while you see the EC district-wide, that is not included in the district-wide. So district-wide was everything else, and we broke out the EC district-wide in its own little category there.
Was anything considered in the variables with the morning times, with parents dropping the children off for work and not using the bus route per se, versus in the afternoons, using the children, using the bus route because parents would not be picking them up? Is that one of the variables in there?
Well, this is just straight up based on data collected.
Okay, thank you.
So that would come into play definitely, but there are no adjustments to it for that.
Dr. Brown and board members, just to, excuse me. Dr. Brown and board members, just to remind you all, the purpose of this chart then is for the staff to evaluate impacts of new bus routes related to student reassignment planning. Don't forget that, that's, that's why we're doing this. So, so it, it may be accurate for a, a family to express concern that the new school that they're going to go to, the bus route is longer than the school they went to previously. But when compared to the average bus, bus route across all Moore County, that new route to that new school that's a little farther may still be very modest compared to what the average route is for the whole county. Everybody following me on that? So it was important that Raimy Kemp and Associates identify the median, the average, and then the range, minimum to maximum, so that when we evaluate changes in, in, in bus route times, that rather than how the new bus route time compares to your previous bus route time, how does it compare to all bus routes in accordance with the range, the median, and the mode? All right? And, and so as we conduct our, as we, as, as the staff attempts to put the finishing touches on a reassignment plan to present in September, we are going to be using these metrics to evaluate what, what we're getting ready to present when the time comes. And then likewise, for the public and for the board, once that plan is presented, you can use this chart then, if you receive concerns about bus route time, you'll have this chart to make your own determination about how it compares with all routes across Moore County. And we'll show you a couple of examples. Our goal today is not to be exhaustive, not to evaluate every individual bus route or what that impact would be. We've had a couple of draft plans that we've put out there, some ideas, some of which received some criticism, and we've responded to that. We've listened to the public and we've, we've kept in mind some of the critical feedback that we received in the spring, some questions that we received. We've worked hard and worked very diligently this summer to address some of those things. And we're going to use a few of those as examples as we finish up here. So Josh, take it from there.
One quick question. Do we really have an EC student on the bus for three hours and 37 minutes in the afternoon?
Yeah, that's a maximum, so it could have been, once again, you see the minimum is 45. The average is just under two hours. So whether it was, you know, I'm not sure if it was inclement conditions or traffic issues, but that was the maximum that was observed of the data we had.
Long bus route.
So any, that, that's not the average maximum. That is, at some point during this year, there was a child that it took that long to go home.
Correct.
And that's the complete range on that, yeah.
So yeah, it would, it would be the last student to get off at the worst possible day of the data collected. And that's what that time is there for, for the EC district-wide. So we'll kind of get into what we just started discussing. And what we've got here is, I tried to put graphics to it, and then we'll kind of compare it to the table we had previously. So there were certain key communities that we wanted to look at, the essentially two schools, the, the one that they currently would attend and the potential redistricting. So here, and once again, red and green, I know, or traffic engineer, I don't know why we gravitate towards that. It doesn't mean slow and fast or anything like that. It was just for color comparison. So what we have is the, the blue star in the middle sort of there is the J. Doughty Road community. And what we did was, we took then the, the data from the previous, from the, from the data collected on the bus routes for the existing conditions. And then we did projections for the potential future conditions. So it's essentially providing a comparison of the school they would attend now to the potential school in the future. So for this one, you can see, these are approximate times. It's, it's hard when you're looking at the future, you're looking at historical data and things like that. You know, obviously, there are roadway improvement projects that will happen in the future that could change this somewhat, but this is based on the data we collected with the data that we got for the bus routes. And essentially, we've got, this one is pretty comparable. We have approximately 52 minutes for both of these routes. So there wouldn't be any expected change or inconvenience to a rider coming from this neighborhood going to either one of those schools. And I guess as you look at this, I'll, I'll pop to the next slide, which kind of, we can show where that fits in. But are there any questions with how we looked at the two different routes? So keeping in mind, this is approximately 52 minutes. These is, these routes actually are significantly lower than the average times. I think we had an hour and 10 minutes, an hour and, an hour and nine minutes for area two and area three. The elementary school average there, we have an hour and three minutes. So once again, the 52 minutes is lower there. Just kind of, we'll go to the next.
That's the same chart we saw earlier, right? Nothing's changed on that chart.
Yeah, it's going to be just kind of, so when I'm flipping through to kind of.
Instead of going back and forth, we, it, it reoccurs there so we can keep moving.
Yeah, it'll keep, after each one of these slides, we put it in there. So the next one we have here is going to be the Eagle Springs community. And what we have there is the, the trip to West End Elementary and then to Robbins Elementary. So this one, you can see there is a little variance. So we have an hour and 13 minutes for the route to West End Elementary, and then to Robbins Elementary, although the distance is significantly further, as you can see on there. That is just actual distance. The travel time is, is an hour and 23. Now, once again, these are approximate. It is based on the data we had for the bus route, which is accurate, existing, and then projections for the increase in travel time or, or difference in travel time for the potential school. So with this one, Robbins, I think, is in area two, and, oh, sorry.
Yeah, area two, which is an hour and 10.
So that's an hour and 10 is your average there. So that's going to be a little bit above the average. So an hour and 23 minutes is slightly higher than the hour and 10 average. And then the West End is, that one is area three, and that's typically an hour and nine. So the hour and 13 is slightly above that as, as an average for that area. Once again, keeping in mind that the elementary school average is an hour and three. So both of these routes are a little bit higher than that, that average for elementary schools and slightly higher for their areas.
I thought this was interesting, if I could elaborate just a little bit. The difference occurs when you get to the junction with 7:05. And so with one route, you're going to go north on, the, the route itself, the circular bus route itself, picking children up in the Eagle Springs area is somewhat of a circle. Not exact, but it's, it's sort of a triangle or three-sided round triangle, let's call it. And so a, a good part of that hour and 13 or hour and 23 is just picking up students. So the real comparison then is the difference from the junction with 7:05 to West End and junction with 7:05 to Robbins. So if you were to take a ruler and, and, and measure that red line and then go north on the green line and put a mark there, it's that last difference on 7:05 from that mark to Robbins that represents that 10 minutes. Other than that, it's all the same. And that 10 minutes, the bus is not picking up any students. So it's just moving. And it's moving at whatever the allowable speed is and what the bus can cover. There aren't a lot of stoplights or anything else. And so it, it's, it's important to bring that perspective to that with the feedback that we got, the concerns that were expressed about distance. And then to measure that against the average route time for the whole district. I found that to be real interesting when this, when this feedback came back. Because, and it's very pertinent. It relates directly to some conversation we had last spring. No conclusions, it was just, it was just, I just found it was interesting. Board members, I defer to you on that.
So just a question for clarification. So the, the, the routes that are current, so for instance, it would be the West End one, those are based on current data that we have and where the pickups are and all of that. The, and then the one that's future would be the same pickups in, in Eagle Springs, but then are there certain assumptions about how many stops additional it makes? Or is it a, a straight shot?
That's where it came into play with the data collected and the Google data that we collected of the times that those travel times would be. So we don't have additional stops after it branches off there. So it is just a, like I said, it's an approximate thing. It's coming up with the best way to predict the future. So it's saying, yeah, it's picking up the same amount here. When it branches off, the increase in time is expected. Once again, Google Maps, if, if there were a situation, this one is pretty smooth sailing, if there were something where there were traffic delays at a certain point, not because of stops, but because of just general traffic in an area, stoplights, things like that, the, the Google and the data we collected would account for that increase. But it isn't because of additional stops along the way or anything.
That's helpful, thank you.
And once again, that was the table where we showed those, those examples there. They were slightly higher than the averages for the area and a little bit even more so higher for the elementary schools. The next one we have is considered the Foxfire Community area. And there we had the New Aberdeen Elementary School and West Pine Elementary School comparison. So this one is, they're fairly similar. They're expected to be about an hour and 28 minutes for the existing and the future. So once again, flipping to the next table, you can see that's a bit higher than the average. I believe those are both area three, and that's an hour and nine minutes. So you know, we're at an hour and 28, which is higher. Once again, that existing is pretty comparable to what would be expected in the future, and it is significantly higher than the, just the average elementary school. And on this one, we have the Village Acres community. And then we're starting to look at middle schools here. So we have Southern Middle School and West Pine Middle School. And Southern Middle School is approximately 48 minutes. And the expected West Pine Middle School is 43 minutes. So this one is one where it's slightly less. Oh, flipped, oh, sorry, current is West Pine, which is 43, and Southern Middle School is 48. So it's slightly higher for that one. Once again, it's, it assumes similar picking up the students and then splitting off kind of the direction it heads to those two schools is very opposite. And this is one where, you know, a lot of that data collected comes into play here with the route. So the, the expected does kind of take into consideration. So this one, they are significantly lower, both of these routes, than your averages. Your averages are an hour and nine minutes for area three. And for elementary schools, it's an hour and three minutes. Sorry, middle, hour and 16 minutes. So even better. And this next one, we have the Pinehurst Number Six community. So this is another middle school study. And we're looking at Southern Middle School and West Pine again. These ones are very comparable, 42 versus 43 minutes. So there's really not much variation there of what would, you know, what is existing and what would be expected. Once again, very different routes that they take, but the projections kind of take into consideration things like any traffic they'd encounter at those peak periods.
Josh, were you all able to get, get a picture of what impact that we would have on the circle? If, if, if Village Acres and/or Number Six were to be reassigned to Southern Middle Schools, they were in draft one that we considered? What, what would that add to the, to the circle?
In terms of increased delay, it is something that, you know, that there would be potentially some. Now, in this case, you know, we've got both of these routes going through the circle. As you look at that, typically what you see is with the redistricting, you might have certain routes that do go through the circle and then other ones that now no longer. So it's, I don't want to say there's a distinct amount of time we can add or anything like that. Ours was more taking the delays that would be incurred to go through the circle and implementing in the, in the projections in terms of forecasting and things like that.
Like number of cars that we would, you know.
Yeah, I think it would, probably the parents would be the bigger impact than the buses on that. And a lot of that, like I said, a lot of these times that we're looking at are not the peaks that we observed. So while we're saying these delays that, that we saw when we did out, went out there and did the runs and we collected this data, a lot of these times would be sort of off-peak. A lot of times, we've seen also that typically, parents driving students to school, it's sort of something where they're also probably going to work or something, not just going there and heading straight back. So it might be something where they encounter that circle. So it'd be really hard to project that without knowing, are they going specifically just to the school? Would they have gone through there anyway for work? The time period, once again, our impacts are sort of at a slightly off-peak, especially with these elementary and middle schools, where the peak times we saw would have been, they'd already be at school or really close to the school if it was a middle school potentially. So while there might be some impact, it's typically what we've seen in the, in the AM hours that we counted and the PM, because it's not your typical four to six, it would be sort of off-peak. So I'm not sure it would have as significant an impact.
Very interesting, thank you.
Does Pinehurst Number Six go through the traffic circle now, John?
It's a continuous right when they go through the circle now. And I think our bus may actually, I'd have to go confirm this, but I think our bus may actually go across through Village Acre to pick up some more students and then come out on 211.
I was curious on the time difference that would be versus going through the traffic circle the whole time.
Yeah, well, that's one of the benefits of right now, the service to West Pine is that continuous right turn that you have coming down in circle instead of queuing up to enter the circle.
And once again, kind of to give an idea, instead of flipping back there, I'll see, just check out my data for that one. That one, the, that's around 7:30 to 8 for the, the roundabout was where we saw the worst of the worst out there. That southbound approach was heavy. We had 234 seconds of when they hit, started hitting the queuing until they got through there. You know, typically with these elementary and middle schools, it is earlier. With the middle school, I can't remember the, let's see, I think. It's the eight o'clock, okay. So once again, they might be hitting that 7:30 to 8 range for the middle school there. So that could be during some of the heavier traffic times.
One of the interesting elements of this, and this is something that Josh and I, along with his associate Nate, Raimy Kemp, discussed. When you come down 15501 in this case, it's very open and free-flowing between the circle and your first experience of a traffic light in front of Pinehurst or Pinecrest High School and then Morganton. After that, it's a six-minute measurement, and you're right down to Johnson Street. When you head out to 11, there's a series of traffic lights. And I've never been successful to get through green lights in my experience. But aside from that, there is a lot of congestion during this time at the school in 211. So at Archie Drive and 211 to get to the school, there's a lot of congestion that happens there and impacts the times. Because when you would look at that, you would think that, as you were alluding to, Ms. Caldwell, coming out from there seems pretty simple. But at this time of the day when that's occurring, that the congestion that occurred, just those little stops along the way and then over at Archie getting there versus the flow and pattern of that flow coming south on 1551 were very interesting, how comparable it made it.
John, can you remind me what time the buses drop in the morning? What's the, the latest one that wants to be at school in terms of allowing students to be there in time for breakfast? What is the window? Is it a 30 minute before school starts, 20, 25?
I think it's about 20 minutes, as, as tight as we like to get, 20 to 15 minutes, so the student can get something to eat, consume it, and then get to their destination before instruction starts.
So is it fair to say that they would be at school if they're riding the bus by 7:35, 7:40 for the middle schools? And about 7:05?
I'd have to pull up a, a chart that we've been, we've developed that shows all that.
Yeah, we saw it just a couple of months ago, yeah, or last month, okay.
With the bell scheduling all the time, so I'd have to confirm that with that chart.
Thank you.
All right, so with this one, with the 42 and 43 minutes, once again, looking at the, the averages that we got for middle schools and for the area they're in, they're clearly well below your, your average of one hour and nine minutes for the area. And then for the middle schools, the hour and 16 minutes. Next area we've got there is the Pinehurst Lake community. And what we looked here at once again is Southern Middle School and West Pine Middle School. Once again, these are very comparable, an hour and 16 minutes and projected to be approximately an hour and 16 minutes. These, these ones are slightly higher than the averages, the hour, averages being an hour and nine minutes. And then for the area and for middle schools, it's right on. So this is, this is about as average as you can get. It's an hour and 16 minutes for middle schools with the average time based on existing bus ridership. Any questions with this one?
Now, again, you're seeing an update on what has gotten us to this point so far. Planning Committee is going to continue to work with the consultants we have engaged with at Raimy Kemp and Associates, as well as Numerex, on continuing to refine and develop the presentation and the recommendation that Grandma Seale will present at the work session on September 3rd. I want to also point out that there has been, since the development of the out-of-capacity chart and the future growth, there have been some developments for residential homes that have recently been approved that were not contained in the original report done by ORED. Example of that is Blake Village located off of NC 5. And so that, along with the Martin property, which is adjacent to the current Aberdeen construction site, that property, those were not contained in the ORED projections. Numerex is, is updating that now. And so the presentation on September 3rd won't include that in an updated capacity chart. So we are being mindful still of development as it changes and continues around the district to make sure, to the best of our ability, we can account for it in what we're evaluating. So again, I want to also note that September 12th at 6:00 PM, there will be a public hearing on the proposed plan and where the public has an opportunity to provide feedback to the board on the plan that's being proposed in September 3rd. We are now open for discussion and questions.
John, I have comments on travel time. The public really needs to understand that we have a large percentage of students that do not ride the bus. And I can guarantee you, no matter how efficient we get in the routes, if we, if we have fewer students, the, the travel time is going to be more. If we have more students, it's going to be less. And you say, well, why don't you get more buses? Well, several years ago, we made a decision to change the bus schedule because we need to save $400,000, and that need has not gone away. We still continue to need to save that because the funding we're getting from the state for everything else is, is averaging a little less than one, excluding employee salaries and wages, is averaging a little more, less than 1% a year increase over the last eight years. Thanks.
Any other questions or feedback from board members?
This is really helpful. I know the biggest question people had had was about transportation and about the bus routes. And I'm, I'm, it's, it's good to see some of this data come out. Obviously, there's a lot for us to look at. So thank you for sharing that today and, and for giving us that look at what the data is starting to show.
Any, any other questions? All right, Madam Chair, with your permission.
Yes.
We'll now move into the pending action and discussion items. And let's see, to begin with, we've got Dr. Kim Bullard. I believe this is her first presentation as our Director of Exceptional Children's Services. Welcome, Dr. Bullard.
She's going to be here a while.
Yes, yes, she does. But fortunately, they're, they're annual renewals, and she's not spending any more money. So I don't anticipate she's going to get a lot of pushback. Kim, all yours.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, board members, and Dr. Grandma Seale. I am requesting approval on four contracts related to services that are needed for the exceptional children's department. These are contracts that we have had previously and we are renewing for the upcoming school year. All contracts being presented for approval have not had an increase in cost from last school year. The first of these contracts being presented for your approval is with John E. Sexton and Associates. The contract with John E. Sexton and Associates provides services for Moore County school students who need ideological services. The cost of the services will be billed at $505 per day and will be rendered three days each week. There will also be the cost of mileage reimbursement at the approved federal rate. The second contract being presented for your approval is with Sand Hills Children's Center. The contract with Sand Hills Children's Center provides services to our students who meet the criteria for services that need to be provided in a developmental day center. who meet the criteria for services that need to be provided in a developmental day center. The funds are made available through the State Board of Education to assist in providing special education services to students with disabilities in which the local LEA has placed them in a developmental day center. The state reimbursement rate and agreed-upon cost is nine hundred ninety-nine dollars and ten cents per child per month, or the developmental day program rate issued by the Department of Public Instruction for the nineteen-twenty school year, and shall be paid in ten monthly payments. An allotment of fifty dollars shall be paid per child per month for education supplies and materials. Children entering the center after September fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen will receive prorated funding. The contract will serve no more than thirty-five students ages three through five. The third contract for your approval is with Maxim Healthcare. Maxim Healthcare Services provides services to our students who need individual nursing service as prescribed by each student's individualized education plan. The cost of these services will be billed at thirty-seven dollars an hour, not to exceed seven and a half hours per day for each nurse required. The final contract being presented for your approval is with All American Interpreters for the Deaf. Contract with All American Interpreters for the Deaf provides services to our students who need sign language interpreting services. The cost of the services will be billed at forty-five dollars an hour unless requested with less than a twenty-four hour notice, and then the billing rate will be sixty-seven fifty an hour. There will also be the cost of mileage reimbursement at the approved federal rate. Currently, these services are required for two students as identified by their individualized education plan. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, that was a different approach than what we've had before, but I was really liking it.
I liked it.
I got the sense you were liking it. So I just let her roll. You want me to have her do the next few?
Yeah, I do. The only question.
Kim, normally, we stop at the end of each one and we ask if there's any questions, but you were doing a great job. We can change that anytime. Anyhow, board members, this is your opportunity on any one of these four annual renewals that we have. Please direct any questions to have the board.
Thank you for providing the number of students that these are serving. That helps with looking at the cost factors.
And it appears from the summary that the services are actually provided to where the students are and the location at the schools versus the students having to go someplace, and I think that's great.
The only question I have is the developmental day cost, the amount that we reimburse, it doesn't appear that it's changed much over the years. Is it a true representation of what the cost is?
That would be something I would have to find out.
Okay, I'm just, I just hope it's enough to support those kids, but yes, I know that that's all mandated, so there's nothing we can do about that, but thank you.
At a previous meeting, I made some comments about the number of exceptional children we continue to grow within the system. I am sure there are people that don't realize what kind of services are actually provided, like nursing services and the auditory services and whatnot, and how specialized they all have to be.
I'm very proud of the fact that this hundred and twenty thousand dollars provides for the health needs of two students. I'm proud of that. I don't want anybody to read me wrong, but I think that it is eye-opening to some members of the public and some elected officials that this is just the health needs of these children. This isn't just their educational needs. And so this is just two of our children, and thank God we're doing what we're doing. I mean, these are good services that we provide, they're worthwhile, but I think it's the reality of the true cost of educating and our commitment to our exceptional children. Anybody else? Any questions for Dr. Bullard? Well done, Kim.
Thank you. You're welcome back anytime.
They like you.
Yeah.
Very good. Mr. Cox? I had to get caught up with Dr. Bullard there. She'd gotten ahead of me on my agenda here. Item three E.
Thank you, Dr. Grimacy, Madam Chair, all the members of the board. This is the final budget resolution for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. I won't go through each item on here or each PRC on here, but I will touch each fund. The majority of changes within each fund are related to fiscal year-end cleanup, where we're moving around dollars to make sure we maximize the state and federal dollars that will revert back if we don't spend them. So we're doing a lot of shifting around related to that. So for state funds, our total budget ending June third, two thousand and nineteen was seventy-eight million, four hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars, which was an increase of two hundred and seventy-one thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars over the third quarter. And like I said, I'll be happy to answer any questions related to any of the specific moves in there if you have them.
I think the word is transfers. Is it transfer? Is transfer appropriate?
There's transfer.
Our commissioners don't like the word shift.
Okay.
I promised, I promised a few of them, we wouldn't use the word.
I'll take notice of that, make sure emphasize transfers.
I appreciate you breaking it down, though, because visually, it's good to see.
And some of these transfers have to do with the actual number of students that were utilizing those services.
Right, so we may have budgeted at one point for a certain number, we got more in and then had to transfer to cover those additional expenditures, or got more money in from the state in this case to cover those additional.
To cover those students, yeah, okay. Because I see that with the EC students and the CTE and it.
Right. So in the local fund, which we refer to as Fund Two, final budget of thirty-one million, twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred dollars, which is an increase of four hundred and thirty-five thousand, four hundred dollars. We did increase or utilize two hundred additional thousand dollars of fund balance to cover those expenditures. Auditors are here now, will know what our final fund balance is. We don't anticipate utilizing the full two hundred thousand, but we did it just to make sure we were covered once the auditors come in and go through everything. So we should have a fund balance at year-end after the auditors finish all their work of just over two million dollars, still over two million. Sorry.
Which is close, because two million is the cutoff.
Correct, yes.
Cash fund balance that we need for federal reimbursements, management, cash flow management, federal reimbursements, that's right. So the, so if we're close to two million, that means that we've come pretty close to, depending on what we're allowed to.
Right.
In other words, no surplus.
Correct.
Little or no surplus.
Correct. The third fund, federal funds, which we refer to as Fund Three, eight million, two hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred and eleven thousand, an increase of seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars over the third quarter there. Local capital funds, four million, one hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars, an increase of one point four million dollars there. That increase is solely around replacement school buses at the state funds that we have to show on our general ledger. No change to school nutrition funds, five million, four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. And in local current operations, which is what we refer to as Fund Eight, final budget of three million, six hundred, eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars, which was an increase of three hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars over the third quarter. The main thing I want to point out there, you've heard us talk a lot about bridge funding, the five nurses, I believe it's five nurses, a psychologist and counselor that we've gone to, went to the county to ask for. We've been funding out of Medicaid, saying that money will run out. We have a fund balance of approximately seven hundred thousand dollars of that Medicaid funding, which covers six hundred thousand dollars, or approximately six hundred thousand dollars for that staff. So we will be out at the end of this year without some additional funding for that or having to do something with those positions. So a total budget for the year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen is hundred and thirty million, seven hundred thousand, eight hundred and three dollars, and that is an increase of two point three million over the third quarter. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, for item F, in Mr. Barath's absence, I'll go ahead and proceed. During your July eighth, two thousand and nineteen regular business meeting, you approved a deed of dedication for water and sewer service to the temporary Pinehurst Elementary School. Execution of the deed of dedication now requires transfer of the water and sewer services to Moore County Public Utilities. The attached release and waiver conveys the improvements to the public utility and acknowledges that all improvements remain in the warranty of one year and that there are not any claims or liens filed against Moore County schools for the work performed. The document has been reviewed by the board attorney and is recommended to me by Mr. Barath that it be approved. Essentially, what we've done is, is we got the deed of dedication approved, now we have to transfer the utilities themselves over to the county. It's a routine action and it will come with the recommendation of my approval. If you have any questions, we can bring them up to John later on, but I also was wondering what this was all about, and so fortunately, it is one that I can talk a little bit about, but offer it for your consideration.
Are there any questions from board members?
No?
All right, thank you very much.
And now, the staff would appreciate the board's direction on any of these items that you would prefer to assign to your consent agenda for next week or those that you would prefer to place on board action.
All consent.
All consent.
So we're looking at three A through F.
Correct.
All of those for consent?
Yes.
Any questions? Ms. Potter, you got that?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And with your permission, proceed to board action. At this time, I'll invite Dr. Alpinfels to come forward and I'll turn it over to her and Dr. Brown. This would be the second reading of new and revised policies that were introduced to the board on July eighth. Dr. Brown?
We've deleted some of the policies because they are redundant and are already expressed or written in other policies. And we also are, have updated the policies to meet with the North Carolina School Board Association's policies so that there's parallel there. So I move forward to have these recommended to be accepted unless there are questions.
You make a motion?
Yes.
So a motion is on the table with Mr. Dennison, there's a second with Ms. Carter. Any discussion? All those in favor to approve the policies, say aye.
Aye. Aye, aye.
It's been a long day.
Dr. Alpinfels, we try and keep this short and sweet.
Any opposed? No, motion carries six zero, thank you.
Madam Chairman, item four B is one that the board is managing and the clerk and I are very willing to assist in any way we can, but otherwise, it's up for, I defer to your leadership.
Thank you, and thank you for passing that off. I'd like to talk about a topic that I know is difficult for us. At our last board meeting, we announced and the whole community knew that Bruce Cunningham had passed away, and at that time, we were not ready. It was just a few days after his passing. We were not ready as a board to address what that meant for us as a board. It does mean that we have an opening, and recall about a year ago, just over a year ago when Mr. Lambert died, we had the same conversation. And at that time, it was very close to the election that was coming up in two thousand and eighteen, and we decided to wait for the voters to decide at that point. Today, we find ourselves in a little bit of a different situation. We are approximately eighteen months out for the next election, and Mr. Cunningham's term expires at our first meeting in December of two thousand and twenty, so we're a long time out. And Ms. Carter and I have conferred with our board attorney, and he has advised us that the board should appoint someone to fill the vacancy unless there are any major concerns. And I guess unless there are any major concerns, I'd like to use this work session to solidify what our process would be to actually fill that appointment. And then just to be sure that you all understand, that the appointment that we would make would be up until the December two thousand and twenty board meeting, where we would swear in a new board member that is elected in the November two thousand and twenty election. So the person that is appointed would be appointed through that time. One thing about process that Ms. Carter and I talked about with our board attorney is that there really is none stipulated by statute. We could use today to appoint someone, somebody could put a nomination on the floor and we could appoint someone. That's one end of the process. At the other end of the process, we could take months and committees and all that type of things. So there is a wide variety. If we look back at our history, we have done it before, and that might be something we want to consider, is the process that we've used in the past. One point of clarification, too, is that we are looking for someone in District Five. So it would have to be the district that Mr. Cunningham was in and that the term, that term is the term that is, the unexpired term that we have to fill. So, Ms. Carter, I know that we've had some conversations with our attorney, and did you want to talk a little bit about a suggestion that we could provide?
Certainly. In talking and reviewing the things that were done during the last tense of appointment, the board solicited applications from interested citizens, those who are willing to serve an incomplete term, and entertained written applications consisting of a resume and the answer to several questions, such as what issues they saw ahead of the board or what they thought they might bring to the board. These were narrowed down to those that fit into the districts necessary, and the board had the opportunity to go through these applications and filter through to find the ones that met the needs of the board at the time. And it would seem to me that the same sort of process might be used as we approach this one. We know that our options are a little more limited this time because it is a District Five seat, and so we will need to ensure that anyone who applies meets the requirements of being from that school district. I would like to see us move quickly because I think we have some very major decisions ahead, decisions that will affect those who live in the Southern Pines Aberdeen District especially. They're going to get new schools, and of course, their school lines are going to be changing, and it would be very, very helpful for us to have a voice from that region sitting with us on the board and able to provide input from the other folks who live within that district. So it would seem good if we could proceed with that on, you know, on a fairly quick basis and bring someone on board. So I would like to, I guess I could make a motion and move that we proceed to open a portal or an online portal for applications, possibly opening it tomorrow and allowing a two-week time period in which we would entertain applications, that applications could be submitted both by email to the board chair or by snail mail to the school office here or by personal drop-off here at the school office, that we ask people to include a resume as well as answer a question or two, such as what do you see the role of a Board of Education member being and what might you bring to a position on the Board of Education? And that we allow about two weeks, that we allow two weeks, ending the time on August twentieth, to then allow time to assess the applications that have come in, not yet setting a date for the decision in the event that more applications need to be submitted. So I can make that as a motion or we can just discuss it now and see what other feedback you would like to put into that area.
I think Robert's Rules has us as a motion, because you've made a motion.
Would you get that as a motion? I think Ms. Thompson was about to speak up.
I just wanted to know if I need to second, if I need to make a comment at this point since there was a motion initially presented. I just want a second then.
All right, then now we can have a discussion.
My motion is that we open a period of two weeks for the submission of applications to fill the District Five seat, requiring a resume and letter of intent addressing the questions, what do you see as the role of the Board of Education in Moore County, and what do you see you will bring to the Board of Education? At the end of two weeks, the evaluations would then be evaluated.
Then I would say that it's August sixth through the twentieth, if we want to be specific.
It would be the date, the specific dates.
That would be a two-week period starting tomorrow, is that right? And it would be addressed to me either by email or by snail mail or by hand delivery. There wouldn't be an online. There wouldn't be an online portal or anything. It would just be an email to me, yeah.
Madam Chairman, with permission, just checking to make sure that we're capable of putting a portal up technically.
We just don't want a portal.
It'd be by email.
By email. I would just clarify that. It would be email to me or drop-off here or mail here to address to me. Is there any discussion about that process? Any questions?
I just want to give you some history on what happened when our friend was released there by the old school board. That happened on the 4th. We had three members resign on the 6th. We had one resign on the 9th. And we appointed Pam on June the 11th, that was June, June the 7th and 8th. We appointed Pam on June the 11th. We appointed Helena on June the 17th, and Stacy and Libby on July the 13th. So it all happened.
Very quickly.
Just for information.
And you did not do an application, you were just appointed, is that right?
She was appointed.
I actually had a conversation with Bruce following the community forum at Union Pines. And Bruce and I connected, and I sent a note to let him know that I would be available and willing to assist if the board needed me.
And that was an at-large position.
That was an at-large position at that time.
There was flexibility.
So what happened was, just as you said, it was an off-time to where I had to reapply and go through that process. But it was 2015 through the following 2016 year to apply.
Right.
And we did the same thing as it indicated. Once I was sworn in, we got a notebook full of applications of, say, 60, 75 that we looked through, and we narrowed down and selected potential candidates. And then we selected and bought a nomination forward to the board to vote on.
So there is a motion and a second on the table?
I'd like to make one other point, too. Pam said, at this point, there were only three, Charles and Bruce and myself. So Bruce and I talked, and then we talked, and what we talked about, then I talked with Charles about, so that all three of us knew what was going on before any appointments were made, just for information. But all individually, though, not as a group.
Of note, I've also spoken with the Board of Elections, and because there could be some confusion about residency requirements, they stand by, ready to answer questions for anyone who is interested. They will make sure that they live in District 5 and would meet the criteria. So I would take as a quick call to the Board of Elections, and they will know.
If they don't, what I did is I just took all of them down there, the Board of Elections, and they told me which ones were in, which ones were out.
Any further questions or discussion?
Yep.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, 6-0. Because it's a two-week turnaround, it would be helpful that this information get out. We have something for you. We can draft something for you before we leave today, Ms. Murphy, to put up on a Facebook page, make sure that we get that out, and obviously, reach out to those that might be interested that live in that area, so. Board comments is the last item on the agenda, is that correct? Yes, it is. Ms. Thompson, or who wants to go? You said you want to go first?
I have a piece of information that I'd like to share. In July, we had several speakers address the board concerning the Moore County schools' grades. As they were giving information, I didn't think that all was said was correct. So I decided to research this information. And my source is the NCDPI Department of Public Instruction website, as well as information received from the Communications Department and the Accountability Offices. First, let me address the grades for Moore County and our surrounding counties. I reviewed eight counties that touch Moore County and one county where a number of our residents work. Chatham County has no A-grade schools. Cumberland has five. Harnett has none. Hoak has none. Lee County has one. Moore County has none. Randolph County has one. Richmond County has one, and Scotland County has one. What was not said is that all of the A schools, with the exception of two, are specialty schools. They're early college programs or ones that require specialized types of magnet areas. They're categorized as, with applications and for those students who are specifically selected. So the ones with A grades, with the exception of the two schools, one in, both of them in Cumberland County, one in elementary school and one a high school. Currently, 72% of the early college programs in the state outperform the schools in their districts. In reviewing the information about Moore County from 2016 to 2018, three of the 23 schools were not graded. Aberdeen Elementary, Southern Pines Primary, and the Community Learning Center at Pinckney. 75% or 15 of the schools stayed the same during these three-year period. 15% or three of the schools came up a letter grade. 5% or one of the schools went down a letter grade. And 5% or one school went up one year and then down the next. In 2016, Moore County schools had only two schools where the growth was exceeded. 15 schools that met growth and three schools that did not meet growth. In 2017, Moore County had five schools that exceeded growth, 11 schools that met growth, and four schools that did not meet growth. In 2018, Moore County schools had eight schools that exceeded growth, eight schools that met growth, and four that did not meet growth. Interestingly, there is no consistency as to which schools exceeded, met, or did not meet, which any good educator means that each year with different students, we get different results. I have a chart that I'll pass on to Ms. Sonia so that she can put this up on the minutes to show which schools are over the three-year period. And I chose 2016 to 2018 because that's when I came on the board. What I have seen, as I charted the schools, is that in 2016, we only had two schools that growth was exceeded. And in 2018, we now have eight schools that, where growth has exceeded. Over the three-year period, Moore County schools averaged 16.33 out of 20 schools tested that either stayed the same or came up in their grades. Do we have room to grow? Yes. And improve? Yes. But we have plans, and I'll refer people to the individual school improvement plans which are working. To know that we have this and that we have the eight schools that are now exceeding growth, that's 400% growth, folks. I mean, I don't know much, anyplace else that has that kind of growth, which means that something good is happening and something positive is happening in our schools. Moore County is making progress with dedicated teachers, competent administrators, and caring parents. And with this continued support, we will carry on making the positive growth that we have. Thank you.
No comments here.
I don't have anything.
I actually do, and I don't mean to be Debbie Downer, but I wasn't here last time when you all said comments about Bruce, and I was wondering if it was okay if I said something to him?
You may. And also, next week at our session, we'll also do a remembrance for him, just so you know that.
Oh, wonderful.
But you're free to do it now.
Okay, thank you. I have served on the Board of Education with Bruce since 2015. When I was appointed, Bruce quickly took me under his wing, and I'm so grateful that he did. He saw something in me that I, at the time, didn't see in myself. I often seeked Bruce's guidance and his advice. He always had this way of, sorry, of just, of just listening to me, making me feel that my voice matters. Bruce, thank you. Bruce had, has, Bruce always had this way of giving me advice and making me see the whole picture in situations without even saying a word to me. To say Bruce was a huge advocate for our schools is an understatement. He spent countless hours thinking of ways to improve our community and our schools. One memory that sticks in my head was when he called me up on Sunday to tell me he was driving around all week to look at the traffic patterns for our bus routes. Another time, he told me he was up at 4:00 a.m. thinking about our redistricting plan. Yes, these are behind-the-scenes of what a board member goes through, but with Bruce, Bruce, I'm sorry, but with Bruce's outside-of-the-box thinking, I'm sure Ann can agree, he had many sleepless nights. Bruce had visions that he shared with me before he left for Ireland. He was so excited about his trip and for the upcoming months ahead. He told me he would, he told me he would drive by McDees Creek and just sit in the parking lot in awe. He was looking forward to the ribbon-cutting on that school, and Bruce was beyond proud of the new schools being built, especially one in Southern Pines. I know I will honor the friendship and guidance he gave me every day. I am grateful and honored to have known Bruce. Bruce was an exceptional board member, a lawyer, and most of all, a friend to me. He definitely made his mark on this community and our hearts. I'm sorry, I got emotional at the end. That's it.
Thank you, that was beautiful.
Sorry.
And it's important to remember all that he has done for us and for this community. And it'll be remembered. I remember during our tour at McDees Creek the other day, you said Bruce and I helped pick those colors on the floor.
We sure did.
So every time, every time you see that pattern of tarozzo, I can't remember where exactly we were standing, but we'll think of him.
Yeah, we sure did.
He really is. He really is. And thinking about that, I would hope, and we didn't say this with the resumes, but I hope people put their unpaid positions as well as their paid positions, because sometimes some of the meaningful work that we do is in a volunteer capacity and what we give of ourselves, just as Bruce did for 40 years here in Moore County. So I hope, I hope that is something that we all consider. Anything else, Ms. Carter?
Sorry.
No, I got emotional for Stacy.
I didn't mean to. I wasn't planning on it.
And at our next board meeting on Monday, we will have a plaque that we present to the family. And so it'll be our opportunity as a board to honor him and remember him as well. So that'll be next Monday. Thank you. Yes.
I move meeting adjourned.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.